The Royal Commission is now in session.
Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the second day of public hearing thirty two, the subject of which is service providers revisited. We commence, as always, with an acknowledgement of the country. We acknowledge the Jugglera people and the Turbo people as the traditional custodians of Manjum, that is Brisbane, which is the land upon which we are gathered for this hearing. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging. We also wish to acknowledge any First Nations people who are participating in this hearing. And we also acknowledge those who are following the hearing either in person or via the live stream. Yes, Miss Eastman?
Chair, just before I start, I think there's two appearances that Council wishes to know.
Are there some appearances to announce? Yes?
Yes, Chief. Commissioners, my name is Doug and I appear for Sunnyfield.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Miss Evans and I appear for the Victorian Disability Worker Commissioner.
Thank you, Miss Evans. Thank you very much. Yes, Miss Eastman?
Thank you. Good morning, Chair, Commissioners and to everybody following the proceedings. Our first witness this morning is Zelda Riddell. She's here with us in the hearing room. For those following the proceedings who are not in the hearing room, you'll only see me as Miss Riddell gives her evidence. And so, Commissioners, I'd like to introduce Miss Riddell. And I think she is going to take an affirmation.
Miss Riddell, thank you very much for coming to the Royal Commission in Brisbane to give your evidence today. We very much appreciate your assistance to the Royal Commission and we appreciate the statement that you have already provided. If you would be good enough to follow the instructions of my associate, who's sitting just opposite you, she will administer the affirmation to you. Thank you very much.
I will read you the affirmation. At the end, please say yes, or I do. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, Miss Riddell. I will now ask Miss Eastman to ask you some questions.
So, Miss Riddell, you've prepared a statement for the Royal Commission dated the twenty fifth of January this year and you've got a copy with you. I might need you to speak up.
Yep.
And there's nothing in this statement that you want to change or amend, is there?
No.
And what you've said in the statement is true?
Yes.
So, the Commissioners have got a copy of your statement and Commissioners, at the end of Miss Riddell's evidence, I'll tender the statement. I want to ask you some questions about your work as a support worker and your work in the disability sector. So can I start with asking some questions to introduce you? So you're in your early thirties?
Yep.
A little higher up.
Sorry, yes, thirty two.
And you work as a disability support worker, but also you use another title called Disability Development and Support Officer. Is there any distinction between those terms?
Yeah, when I was recruited to work for the Department of Human Services, when I was twenty one, we were recruited as Disability Development and Support Officers and we were public servants. I do make the distinction because I think the designation of officer puts more responsibility on us to work for society, not just for individuals. And I also am a disability support worker for a person who runs his own support service, who is an individual. And I think there is a real distinction in how I perform my duties between those two roles.
So when we have our conversation today about the nature of your work, is it okay if sometimes I refer to support workers and that's intended to pick up everybody?
Absolutely. And my statement only covers work that I've done as a disability development and support officer, but I also recognise I'm a disability support worker more broadly.
So after you finished high school, you completed a Bachelor of Arts in Journalism and Indigenous Studies at The Macfarlane University.
Correct.
And you were working in hospitality for the first period of your career. So that coincided with finishing university and starting to think about where you wanted to work long term, is that right?
Yes, I could have been a journalist, but I decided I wouldn't enjoy it.
And so after you've been kicking around in hospitality for a while, someone suggested that you might be interested in working in support for people with disability and that led you into your first job with the Victorian Department of Human Services.
That's right.
So that's that DDSO role.
Yep.
And when you applied for that job, did you have to have any qualifications?
No, I didn't have a qualification when I started, but they were specifically interested in the idea that I understood about self-determination and human rights from my background and that I could cook and clean.
So you didn't need to have done any particular course at university or TAFE to get the job?
No.
And when you started in that first role, you were employed on a Level One unqualified according to the Disability Services Enterprise Agreement that existed at the time?
Yep.
And did the enterprise agreement set out the terms and conditions of your employment?
Yes.
Remember that? And also tell you what the rates of pay would be for the work that you would do?
Yep.
And the agreement also set out what your leave entitlements would be. But they're a little bit different because you're a casual, so you didn't come on initially, did you, as a full-time worker?
No. And to pick up a permanent position, there was a requirement that you would undertake or have already completed a qualification, which is a CERT four.
So for the first two years that you were working as a casual in support work, were you working around about twenty hours a week?
Yeah, I, yeah, I would say that's probably pretty accurate.
Right. Now, you are also a person who's told us in your statement that you live with disability?
Yeah.
And you are autistic and you've had a diagnosis of ADHD, is that right?
Yes.
And that's a diagnosis which has come in fairly recent times?
Yep.
And when you think about you and your personality, you've been, always been a person who's been very introspective and analytical. You've got a lot of insight and reflection.
I think you have to be as an autistic person. I didn't know I was autistic until quite recently, but it makes a lot of sense, the feeling of otherness and feeling that you need to be alert to the way that people behave around you because you don't have that intuitive sense of what people mean.
And the work that you've done in supporting people with disability has caused you to think quite a lot about the nature of that work, how you work, and also allowed you to really observe what's going on around you, is that right?
Correct.
Would it be fair to say that in terms of coming and sharing your story with the Royal Commission, that it's very much informed by what you've observed over the many years that you've now worked in the disability sector?
Yep. And also I'm studying at Deakin, Disability and Inclusion, and that added lens of the most contemporary and evidence-based knowledge that we have about, you know, how we apply disability rights and how we practise person-centred care. It's really helped me reframe a lot of the experiences I've had and understand what has really bothered me about the industry previously in a way that I didn't have the words to explain before.
All right. So I want to come back to when you first started. You're a casual, twenty hours a week, and you're working for the department. Then, over time, things have changed, both in terms of who you work for and the nature of your work. So can we just walk through how your career has developed? So I think, as you said, to be able to move from a casual role into something more permanent, be it permanent part-time or full-time, the first step is that you had to have a new qualification, is that right?
Correct.
And what did that involve?
It was, I think, a twelve to sixteen month part-time certificate that I did at an RTO.
And did that involve doing any particular practical work outside your employer? Did you have to go and do practical work to demonstrate your skills?
I actually was able to demonstrate my skills with my employer, so I didn't have to get a secondary placement.
And when do you remember obtaining the qualification that enabled you to move to permanent part-time work? How many years did it take to get there?
Um, I would have started around the time I got married, which I think was two thousand and fifteen.
It's Valentine's Day, you better remember that date today.
Our anniversary was only a week ago.
Okay. All right. So is it right to sort of say it was almost about a three or four year period in the lead up?
Yeah, maybe that.
To get the qualification?
Yes, to decide to do it and then to complete it.
Right. And during that first period of time, so I just want to focus on the period leading up to when you had to take on the further qualifications. As a casual working twenty hours a week, what type of work were you doing and where did you work?
I worked in what they then called the Western Metro area. I worked at a lot of different houses.
When you say houses, let me interrupt, group homes?
Yes, group homes, yeah. If I had to guess, I'd probably say I worked at about twenty different houses, but not regularly. There were about three houses I worked at as a preferred casual, which meant that they would call me before they called, they would call me as a group of preferred casuals before they called other casuals. The kind of work I did in those environments tended to be on the less experienced, less skilled side. So I would do more laundry, cleaning, I guess what you, I would describe as just hanging out with people. And I wouldn't be responsible for the more intricate stuff like health appointments, doing reports and planning and stuff.
In that early period, did you have any on-the-job training, so that's separate from the certificate, but on-the-job training?
Yeah, I would say not, well, part of the induction was that you had to undergo some training at the houses, but until you were inducted, you weren't really considered a DDSO at all. So once I'd completed the induction, which was quite intensive, from there, all the rest of my training was informal.
And as a casual, were there opportunities of increasing your responsibilities in houses?
Really, the only way that you could do that would be to pick up short-term contracts. And in that contract, usually you would be given the responsibilities of the person who was away for that period. So if that person was a key worker for a resident, you would become their key worker for that month and take over their responsibilities, which is how you, the best way to upskill when you're working is to take over someone's responsibility. So you have like examples of the kind of work you're supposed to produce from what they produced before.
And in terms of undertaking what you've described in the statement as direct support work, did you have to do some additional training in understanding the history of institutions, de-institutionalisation, supporting people with complex disabilities and behaviours, as well as manual handling, medication administration, and then using disability equipment like slings and hoists? Did you have to do that?
That was all part of the induction process, yeah.
And in terms of learning those skills, which has sort of quite varied in understanding historical models, learning to support people with complex disability, as well as some manual handling, was there any particular emphasis on what was the most important thing for you to be skilled at?
Not really. I guess there's always been a focus. When you start as a casual, you get told money and medication is the most important thing, that you really can't afford. Do talk fast, I'm sorry. Money and medication are the two things that you can't mess up.
What do you mean by money?
We do handling of people's petty cash and we kept and still keep cash records of logs of what cash people have at the house. And they're checked in the morning, checked at night, to make sure that no money's missing and it's all accounted for. And that's like really important, as well as medication, obviously having a record of what medication you gave and if you give parent.
In terms of administering any medication, did you work to any health professionals to give you guidance on how you should do that or what you should do or to understand what the nature of the medication might be?
We have medication training and for every medication that residents are provided, you have the, I'm sorry, I don't remember the name of it. It's like the printout that the manufacturer provides to describe the side effects, what it's commonly treated for. We also have a medication treatment sheet that will say, sorry, I use my hands when I talk, that'll say when the medication was prescribed, by whom, and then on an overleaf it'll say when it was prescribed for, what it was prescribed for, when it was intended to be given, what the potential side effects are. So you have all that to hand, but you, as a casual, would almost never interact with people's medical professionals directly unless there was an emergency.
Right. So after taking on this work for a few years, you got to a point where you're feeling a little bit burnt out and overwhelmed, is that right? And you went on a secondment to work with one of the unions.
That was after I'd commenced my permanent position after I got married, yeah.
And that just gave you a little bit of time out to recover and to really reflect on whether or not you wanted to continue working in the support work area, is that right?
And I was really happy to go back, actually. At the time, I couldn't work in an office, ADHD.
All right. So you got to the point of like, working in an office might seem a good idea, but actually what you liked doing was to be working with people and supporting people, is that right? So as we just move your career forward, you started employment with Home at Scope in twenty nineteen. And did you make a decision to work with Home at Scope?
No, we were, the Victorian Government had owned and operated a number of supported independent living facilities. And when the NDIS was introduced, they proposed to tender out those houses to be managed by other services. And Home at Scope succeeded in getting the tender for most of the Western Metro. So I was transitioned as well as the house.
Okay. So it wasn't sort of finishing off with the department and going to something entirely new?
Although it looks like that on my resume.
But a new service provider came in. So you've worked at four houses, is that right, since working with Home at Scope? I'm just looking at paragraph sixteen of the statement.
Four, yes, four would be that I was contracted to as a permanent, yep, but more if you counted casual work.
And over the time that you've worked, is it fair to say that your skills have increased?
Absolutely.
From on-the-job work?
Yep.
You've got the additional qualifications and do you now have a certificate?
I do have a certificate for, yes.
A certificate for?
Yep.
And you've also had the opportunity to work upper level, so you've been a house supervisor.
Yep, and a two A briefly.
And what do those roles, when you're working up in higher duties, what have they involved?
I guess you are working in both directions. So you are providing support to the staff who you supervise, but you're also providing the sort of compliance documents that the management level above you requires, as well as liaising with family and support coordinators to a greater degree. You are ultimately responsible for the work that the staff produce at the house. So you have to make sure that everybody's working at a good standard and also that they're happy at work and they're not stressed.
Did you have to have any special training to take on these acting up roles as supervisors?
It would be, it's part of the EBA that to work as a two A or a three A, which is DDSO Level Two Advanced or DDSO Level Three Advanced.
Okay, so just pause in there so everybody else can follow us.
Yep.
The EBA is an enterprise agreement?
Yes.
And the enterprise agreement sets out the different levels for people to be employed in. And what you have to do with each level might be described by something called a classification and that might set out the types of duties or responsibilities or qualifications you need to be clicked in at that level. Is that, I'm trying to put that in a simple way, but not oversimplify.
Yes, so to do either of those roles, which are like the three level is supervisory, to do that role, you need to have a CERT six. I had a CERT seven, which was a graduate certificate of disability and inclusion that I got from Deakin. So they considered that equivalent or higher so that I could do the two A role. The other times that I supervised, I didn't have that graduate certificate, but they were short-term contracts where I think they really needed someone who could step in. And so I was, I couldn't have got that position permanently, but I was sent in to help at that time.
Have you turned your mind to taking on a supervisor or an operations manager type role in the work that you do?
Certainly, being a house supervisor is a really cool job. I don't really like working full-time and I would never be an operations manager. I don't think it's so much work. Those guys work so hard.
So for you, working permanent part-time suits you the best, is that right?
Yep.
And so the option of working full-time has arisen, but you've decided permanent part-time is what your preference might be?
Yeah, I had the chance after being a two A for eight months, I could have been eaved into the role, which is an acronym, I don't know what it stands for at the top of my head. But I chose to go back to working part-time because working full-time doesn't leave you with a lot of time, especially as a shift worker, you're doing like thirteen-hour shifts. You might do one week where you work fifty hours, it's pretty hard.
And there's some of the shifts that you do overnight or what's called in the industry, the sleepover shifts?
No sleepovers, no active nights.
Okay. Now, in addition to the work that you do for Home at Scope, you also work one shift a week on a casual basis as a support worker for a person with disability who lives in Melbourne. And you've done that role for about five months.
Yes, sometimes less than one shift a week, depending on my availability.
And did that arrangement come through Home at Scope or did it come through a private arrangement? How did you come to do that work?
It was just, I was, when I stopped working full-time, I was looking for other jobs to do because I was quite burnt out and thinking about leaving altogether. So I was looking for other disability work and I applied for this job with just a couple who run their own service and I went to meet them and I was like, this is amazing, they're really remarkable people.
What did you like about that model?
I guess two things. One, I have a really high degree of responsibility in my job and the shift can seem like it's more about my management and about the NDIS compliance than it is about supporting the person. So working for someone who, there is no incident reporting, there's no case notes to write, there's no like medication sheets to sign, I wait for them to need something and when they need something, I do it. And it feels, yeah, it feels like you're being really useful just for the person you're there to support.
All right. So I want to move now to some of the matters that you set out in the statement, which you describe as workplace issues that you've seen. So before I ask you about it, just a couple of points to qualify exactly what we're going to be doing. First of all, you didn't want to say this part of your evidence is criticising any person or any service provider and that what you wanted to do is feel that you could tell the Royal Commission your honest opinion about what you're seeing in action, but that you're conscious that you don't want that to be taken as a criticism of the support workers. Because you say often the incidents that you've seen of violence, abuse, neglect or exploitation result from staff who are under-trained, under-resourced, under-supported or who lack an understanding about disability rights and inclusion and they're under pressure to get all of the tasks done and they might not be confident in doing those tasks.
Yep.
So that's an important context for the topics that we're going to talk about. So the first thing that you've observed over the time that you've worked is that as a community, disability support work is devalued by society and so are the workers. It's seen that working in disability support wouldn't be a great job, but you're doing that because you're training for something else. And there's this perception that there must be a better place to work. Can I ask you, from those perspectives, what does that have on you? What impact does that have on you as a person who works in this sector and has a long-term commitment to supporting people with disabilities?
That is a question I have not been asked before. I guess it feels sometimes like I have an obligation to do something that's considered important by society and that no matter what I say about the impact I'm able to make, the way my job makes me feel and how valuable I know it to be, people just don't believe me. And I would say in addition to that, that the, I think, unexpressed belief that disability support workers are unskilled and lacking insight means that even people who should listen to us assume we don't really know anything.
Okay. Next issue is non-direct care work and we've sort of touched on this, I think, already. And that is that when we look at the work required of disability support workers, there is the direct care work, which is supporting a person in their day-to-day life. It might be, as you say, preparation of meals, intimate personal care, support in the community. But part of the non-direct care work is writing up notes, so keeping the records of medication administration and things like that. And you've noticed over time that the emphasis was on the direct care work, but there's not often sufficient time to be able to do the administrative work and also that support workers are not necessarily trained and supported to be able to write good case notes. And is it right that one of the concerns that you have is that when something goes wrong, people turn to the notes, to the records, to find out what happened and maybe why something happened? So what do you think needs to happen to support the support workers to be able to do the work of non-direct care, so note-taking? Have you got a view about what should happen in that respect?
Yeah, definitely. I mean, the big one that I think workers worry about is that we don't get any funding for non-direct care hours. So when the NDIS, sorry, this is going to involve a lot of acronyms. When the NDIS prepare the ROCK, which is the roster of care for us, only supervisors get any admin hours. And all workers are funded for is the hours precisely when the residents are awake at home and needing support. If they don't need direct support in those hours or they're away from the house, we don't get funded for those hours, which means you have to choose to do any administration work you have to do, which is a requirement of your job with the residents there. And especially in the types of houses I work at, you are always needed on the floor. You cannot, it's very hard to choose when to walk away, especially like the times where you need to write the best notes are the times where you're also needed on the floor.
So just a little more time in terms of doing the whole suite of the duties that you need to do and respect for that work in terms of note-taking, you think that's a big issue?
And I guess also better supervision around the kind of notes that we have because if you, like, we have like a little single-page printout that describes what our notes are supposed to look like. But if you haven't had a lot of practice and someone's sitting with you and saying, hey, we don't use that phrase, like we're supposed to be objective, we're supposed to be chronological and a lot of the times you read notes and it just says the bare minimum and it doesn't describe things. But you actually need to describe the sequence of events when things happen quite well, you need to be honest about stuff that's happened, like even if someone's in a slightly different mood, that can end up really mattering three days down the track when you find out that they had a toothache. But if you don't put it in that you observed that they appeared to be doing something different to how they normally do it or write that you had a conversation about something with a family member or with a resident that ends up mattering down the track, it can seem like things happen out of nowhere, out of context, that, yeah, that there's not like a chronology to things. So it matters to write good case notes and to have people to talk to you about how to write case notes that can demonstrate how things happen because allied health professionals need them, supervisors need them.
At a big picture, one of the things that you've At a big picture, one of the things that you've observed in your work is that there will be incidents of violence and abuse. But you have a concern about neglect and neglect over a long period of time might be. Just overlooking or turning a blind eye to something that might be quite small. But if it's not recorded in the notes and it's not followed up over time. Then you've seen situations that a person with disability uh then suffers. The consequences or the impact of that ongoing neglect over time. So note taking about observation is one of the tools to protect against neglect, is that right?
Yeah, um, I was really lucky for the majority of my career to work. Um, under a two A who was really well trained, really experienced, um. Who had been trained very well by the department. And she taught me that anything you observe and the actions you take go in the case notes. So if, even if you see something like a resident rubbing their wrist. You don't look away from that, you might ask them, you might read back on the case notes and see did something happen to their wrist. Then you document that you observed them rubbing their, this is just an example, this didn't happen, but you document that you saw them rubbing their wrist. That you asked them what response they gave and if you have concerns that it's pain, you follow up with their G P and explain the situation to them. Um, but if you don't know the resident very well or you don't have good evidence about. The circumstances under which you observed that behaviour, you might just not think very hard about it. But then you may found out, find out later that they were injured accidentally or intentionally. And you missed following up on that when you had the chance and documenting where that might have started from.
Right. I want, so there's lots of topics in your statement and I might not be able to cover all of them. But I want to ju- jump to the training area which you've set up in your statement. And i- you do you think that the training for support workers has steadily decreased in quality and quantity? And if so, why is that the case?
Um, I, I do think that. Organisations are under more pressure to get more staff through because, um, there are a lot more services now. The demand for staff is a lot higher, so, um. It, there are less disability workers available to be recruited. I think more people come and leave the job than I've ever really seen before. Um, and also I don't think training is adequately funded under the N D I S that you can afford to. Like, a lot of the new workers that I see, they do their induction training in their own time. Uh, whereas I was paid, I had five days, um, full time, like nine to five training in person in a classroom with a trainer. I don't think they can afford to do that anymore.
So in, in Victoria, you now have the Victorian Disability Workers' Commission. And uh there's no requirement is there to register as a support worker? But if you are registered, does the commissioner require registered support workers to undergo. Mandatory training each year, like see, like, continuing professional improvement training or something like that?
I, I don't, uh, I don't want to speak too much about this because I know they're also appearing, um. But it's not mandatory, it's just for them to get a sense of what training people are undertaking, that's how I understand it. So it's ten hours of training that you're supposed to report that you've had and I did have a conversation, um. When Dan Stubbs spoke to us at the conference, Commissioner Dan Stubbs. Uh, to say, I don't think people are getting ten hours of training to report. I've had zero hours of training in the last three months. But because I'm studying, those hours kind of count. And I think a lot of workers might go years without getting ten hours of training.
Do you think the owner should be on the worker to seek out training opportunities? Or should the, uh, provision of training come from the service providers? What do you think?
I think and know that our professional development support and training. In our E B A is something that we should be guaranteed to have an hour of training every month. So getting, uh, support, so getting ten hours of professional supervision and support. Should be something people get all the time, but they don't. Um, and I think in an ideal world. The training that we get should be like refreshes about stuff we already do, like first aid we get. Um, C P R we get, but also it should be based on the needs that the clients have. So residents have, if you are in a team meeting and you report that someone has been. Diagnosed with a chronic illness, immediately chronic illness training or training for that specific illness should be on the table, um. And we do get, if someone has a behaviour support plan, sometimes the behaviour support practitioner will come and train us to understand. What's in that plan, um, but I think most of the time workers train each other about the demands of the job. And there should be much more context and information that were provided by professionals, not by each other.
Can I ask you about few areas of training? Uh, one is about supportive decision making. And in your statement, you address choice and control and that some support workers feel they have to re-parent. The person with disability they're supporting. Has any of your training involved, uh, approaches to supportive decision making and practical skills? As supporting people with disability to make their own decisions about day to day life activities. But also broader activities and broader life goals.
Uh, I would say at work, I've never received that training, but as part of my graduate certificate. There was a really strong emphasis on, um, understanding how you can support people's decision making. Um, and how to integrate people's, um. Capacity to make decisions so that you're receptive to everybody, not just people who verbally articulate their needs.
In terms of the work that you do and measuring your performance, I don't know if you have an annual review of how you're travelling. But your supported decision making and the skills that, um. You use in supporting people to make their decisions measured as a particular, uh, area of responsibility or duties. That you have to report to.
Uh, we should have every month a check in with our supervisor to talk about how we're travelling, but I think I've had about. Maybe formally less than twenty hours of P D S in my entire career. Um, and in terms of, and this I think, no one's ever asked me that, but I think that would be fantastic. But no, we don't actually have a formal process to make sure that you are following. Good practice with supportive decision making. However, we do have as key workers a responsibility to do what's called person centred planning. But the quality of those person centred plans varies a lot. But if it would help you, I can describe the process because I just undertook one.
That's okay. I might, if we've got time, we'll come back, but I'm just conscious of time. The, the others, uh, we heard yesterday from some of the service providers that they have human rights policies. Some have written policies, some don't have written policies, but say that's very much part of their values. And there's an expectation that everybody will take a rights based approach. In your, uh, career, have you had training on the human rights of people with disability? And what that means in terms of how you actually do your job?
Human rights, uh, especially the U N C R P D, the U N Convention of Rights of Persons with Disability, did feature in the Cert four. Um, I did briefly undertake the Cert six and it was never mentioned and, but I didn't finish it because the I T O went bankrupt. And definitely in the graduate, I know. Um, and definitely in the graduate certificate, there's a massive emphasis on every part of the course. Reflecting on how that part of study, um, can be influenced by the U N C R P D.
And, and also we- we've asked about trauma informed approaches and culturally responsible sensitive approaches. And that links in with a person centered approach. Do you have particular training on the skills? To do trauma informed work or culturally responsive work?
Culturally responsive work, no, I've never had training. Uh, I think it's mentioned in the Cert four and I have only ever worked at one house. Where I was told here are some cultural needs that the residents have that you have to attend to. And last year was the first time I ever was presented with a concept of trauma informed care. But I think intuitively, a lot of workers that I have worked with. Understand when you look at people's history, yes, this person has experienced trauma, um, they've experienced trauma in a. Care setting like this one, so you do have to undertake your work differently, knowing they could be very easily triggered by something that you would think is innocuous.
Right. And one view you have is that in every workplace, you should assume that abuse is occurring. Even if you don't see it or report it.
Absolutely.
So the final topic I want to ask you about, and the commissioners have got all of your statement and will have read everything, is about making complaints. From, and I'm not asking you to comment on the culture of, of the particular service providers who you work with. But what is it about the culture of workplaces that either prevents people wanting to make a complaint? Or raise a concern, alternatively, if your experience is that there are cultures that encourage. People and people are regularly reporting incidents and complaints. What is it about those cultures that create that? So I'm not sure. Speak to, gives you the option of which one you'd like to take. But, but making complaints or raising incidents or reporting, even small things around neglect. What, what are the cultures that either restrain that or promote that?
Yeah, I guess I've seen both and there's a really broad spectrum, even working under the same management structure. The way that incidents are handled varies really widely and I would say the thing that is the greatest. Facilitator of a confident reporting culture at work is that people are experienced writing reports. That they have been trained to write quality reports, um, that they have. Seen the consequences of reporting stuff and believe it to be, um. Effective in providing better care and better support, um. I am, and I do think I mentioned this in my statement, I am kind of known for being the person who reports stuff. And so when I see something at work that I know needs to be reported, I will make sure I have a conversation with my peers and say. I'm gonna have to do a report about this. Here's what I'm gonna say, here's what will happen. Please don't be intimidated by the process. Like, the reason we're reporting it is so we can fix this or this. It's, there's usually. Um, usually like a, usually a good outcome when you are honest about where something has failed or there's been a mistake. That's not always the case, but I always tell people you've got to approach it with the assumption that when you're honest about what happens, you get a good outcome. Um, and then the reverse of that is that if people feel like reporting will go nowhere. Have a perverse outcome where the thing doesn't get solved and you just get in trouble. Um, people will be really hesitant to report, especially like, I got training to write reports. And a lot of the people I work with, if I see something, like it doesn't have to be. A really serious issue, it could just be an injury that no one else has reported. So you put in a report about that injury and I'll, I'll ask my peers like, oh, do you want to do the report? And I'll say, I've never done a report before. I'm like, well, let's do it now, like, like, let's practice. And you can see what happens. And then because reports are escalated to, through the management structure. Usually it means that someone will have a conversation with us and almost always people say thank you for reporting. Um, and that's formal reporting. And then there's informal reporting, which, um. Uh, I do talk about in my statement that, uh, sometimes it's easier to report stuff. Informally than formally, if you don't really know how to describe the issue that it, like, if it's clearly an injury, that's an easy report. If it's something more complicated or, uh, subjective, it's hard to know how to report that.
If, if an organisation, so putting a hypothetical to you, um, has a policy of zero tolerance. And that if a report or a complaint is made, that the support worker is stood down immediately and may be terminated. Uh, from your experience, does that zero tolerance approach support? Making complaints, lodging reports. Or does it have a consequence in terms of the willingness of support workers to record their own? behaviours or what they witness of others?
Well, I think in our industry, because we, uh, we require a very low level of qualification. And sometimes zero qualifications, we tend to recruit people who get the job because they can start quickly. Because they need money and, um, because they can learn on the job. They don't have to be invested in it as a career. And I think there is a hesitancy with people to do anything that might lose, that, that might. Put them in a position where they lose their income. And so that's part of why I guess I do talk to people extensively about the reporting process. Because people do worry that if they even see something or talk about something that they've seen. That that could cause them to lose their jobs. Um, I have also seen where I've reported something the right way about abuse where people aren't stood down. So I don't know if I've ever worked in an environment where we've had a true zero tolerance policy, but I would really say that. It would be a huge deterrent to people to report if they felt like there was a chance that they could be. Um, stood down, especially people who aren't confident writing reports or case notes. Who, uh, don't have experience or, uh. Experience with the process or, um, confidence in the systems that we work under. So I would be really, um. I'd be really concerned about making any incentive for people to hide what's going on. Because what happens, I've seen when you tell people there's a zero tolerance policy or tell, like, I've had managers say. Um, I could stand you down for that. Like, it's, it's a threat. It's not really about promoting the best care. Like, what we want is for staff to be able to say, I have a concern about this, I'm not confident doing this. Before there's an issue, rather than making them feel like they will be under a lot of scrutiny if they talk about what they've seen.
My last question, and the commissioners might have some questions for you, is you've provided in the statement some suggestions for change. What is your vision or the future of providing supports to people with disability? What do you see as happening into the future? And I haven't asked you that question at all, so this is coming, uh, without any notice.
Um, recently, especially in response to the commission, I've seen a few articles saying that. The model of support that I work in and supported independent living is. Retrograde and it needs to be abolished. And I think that would be a real. Um, it, it would have to be undertaken with a lot of caution because I guess I have a sense of history about how we arrived at this point. I work with a lot of people who, not, not a lot, maybe quite a few people that I've supported in my career. Who were relinquished as very small children into care, who were brought up in institutions. Who, uh, rely on strong systems to keep them safe and to uphold their rights. And even though absolutely the institutions were not providing adequate support or care for people. There were aspects of closing the institutions that I don't think people considered. And aspects of people's lives and support systems that were lost without really thinking about what those actions would mean. So, for example, I've supported a couple of people who had really strong responsible roles. In the facilities that they lived at. They weren't institutions like big institutions, but they would have jobs that they did. And when they were, and this is what I understand from people who were with them during that transition, when they were transitioned into group homes. They lost those responsibilities and felt a little bit unimportant or. Like they were kind of cut off and left out in communities that they weren't familiar with. So I would, I would hope that as part of this mission, we're evaluating not just. The harm that's done, but what people's lives look like holistically. What good happens in group homes that people who would otherwise be really isolated have sometimes, like, sometimes. Friends that they've known for twenty years, they live together, they appreciate each other's companies, they're, they're advocates for each other, like. This idea that there is only harm that's done in group homes is certainly not my experience. But I do envision a world where formal paid support, and this is completely fantastical. But a world where formal paid support is completely redundant, where having an intellectual disability. Or having dual disability, where you have like autism and O C D or something, doesn't preclude you from being free in the community. We don't live in a world like that now, but we could. And so while I would like to see enormous change in my area, I want to make sure that any decision we make. And any decision, any decisions that. and any decision, any decisions that are made that affect me capture the good and the bad of my job. Um, and that while we're looking into systems and services that support people with disabilities, we're also looking out into the world to see if it's safe there too, if it's upholding people's rights in the communities. There are very few places I can go where I know that the people I support will be safe and understood, and I'd like that to be everywhere.
Thank you very much for your evidence. I know we probably feel like you've just touched the surface of everything that you've said in your statement. But the commissioners may have some questions for you, Chair.
Yes, thank you very much. I'll ask first Commissioner Bennett, uh, if she has any questions over.
No, thank you.
And Commissioner McHugh.
Uh, thank you, Chair. One question for me or more of a clarification, Miss Riddell, thank you for your evidence. I can't find the specific reference, but I wanted to clarify, it's your view that they've been too much now focused on things that support workers are doing, like cleaning and hygiene, rather than more capacity building out into the community. Can I just clarify that to your view?
Oh, a- absolutely. And if I can expand on that briefly, a huge part of my job used to be about supporting people's entire lives. And since the introduction of the N D I S, I don't have much to assist my residents with when they go out in the community because they have separate funding that has to be attached to a separate provider and the ability that we used to have to keep proper documentation about what people want from the rest of their lives is completely eliminated. And there is very little accountability from these services. So I have residents who are non-verbal and they come home and I from six hours with a one-to-one provider. And I'll say, what did they do today? And they'll say, oh, we went to the park. You went to the park for six hours? Doing what? Like, I know this person, I know they have diverse interests, I know they have family and social networks that they could connect with. How can you say for six hours, five days a week, they just went to the park? That's really, really, really unsatisfactory to me. Sorry, very passionate about that one. Thank you for asking.
Um, thank you very much for clarifying that.
Thank you. Um, in your, uh, statement, uh, you referred to the difficulty of doing the paperwork. That you've explained is so essential to, uh, providing effective support, uh, for the people that, whom you do support. What is it that has changed, that has made it so difficult, um, to prepare the necessary paperwork? You suggest, I think, that it was easier once upon a time, now more difficult. What's been the change that's affected it?
Um, certainly, uh, there is, in, even in the lead up to the N D I S, we were um, warned extensively that we would lose all admin hours, we would need to get used to not spending any time in the office. Um, we would need to, uh, get used to channeling most of our administrative work back through our supervisors, which is not fair on them, because they work really hard. Um, and especially now that there are N D I S rosters of care in place. If you work in a busy environment like the one I work in, to have the time to sit down for half an hour and write comprehensive notes, catch up on emails, make sure that you, there's a, I could, I probably should have written a list for you, but as a key worker, there's a lot of uh, administration you need to keep up with to make sure that everyone's paperwork is up to date, to make sure that you are following up on the residents' needs. But if you don't have time to go into the office and do that stuff, if there's an expectation that you should just be with the residents when they're home, um, you have to make the decision to tell somebody, I'm sorry, I can't help you with that, I have to go do paperwork, which is really unsatisfactory to me. Or you have to, like, I'm in this position at the moment, you just have to be a little bit behind on everything, which is awful, like you wanna make sure that you have the time and capacity to be responsive when someone needs something.
Thank you very much. Well, thank you very much, uh, Miss Riddell, for your very thoughtful evidence, if I may say so. We're very grateful for your assistance to the Royal Commission. Thank you.
And thank you.
Ms. Eastman.
Could I tender Ms. Riddell's statement?
Yes.
Could you mark the statement as exhibit thirty-two dash two?
Yes, Ms. Riddell's statement will be admitted into evidence and given that marking.
Our next witnesses, I think, are here. If we could just have a short adjournment to reconstitute the hearing room, so.
Turn briefly to allow that reconstitution to occur. Thank you again, Ms. Riddell.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned.
Thank you.
The Royal Commission is now in session.
Yes.
Uh, thank you, Chair. So we're back to panel, but a panel of two, and I welcome Dr. Fiona McDonald and Mr. Angus MacFarlane. And I think they're going to take their oaths and affirmations. Is that done? That's already done. Okay.
That's already done, yes. That's right. In that case, thank you very much for coming to the Royal Commission to, uh, give evidence. We appreciate your attendance and, uh, the, uh, very detailed statements that we have received and which we have diligently read. Uh, if, uh, you would be good enough to pay attention to Ms. Eastman, she will now ask you some questions.
So I just want to start with some introductions. So Dr. McDonald, can I start with you?
Hi, um.
You are Fiona McDonald?
Dr. Fiona McDonald. Uh, I'm currently employed.
Can I, sorry, can I, can I do a little shot bit on this, just to hopefully make it pass? So you, um, have prepared a statement for the Royal Commission. Have you got a copy with you?
I have.
The statement's dated the third of February. There's no changes to the statement.
There aren't.
And are the contents of the statement true?
They are.
Now, in terms of who you are, uh, you currently are the Policy Director, Industrial and Social at the Centre for Future Work, hu- which is housed in the Australian Institute.
Yes, I am.
And your, uh, research over many years uh, has been the Disability Support Workforce, and you've undertaken three A R C funded projects. And your main research programme has been investigating the structure of working arrangements and the quality of work of disability support workers in the N D I S. And you set out in your statement a very extensive C V and your publications. So one of your recent publications is, uh, a sole authored book called Individualising Risk, Paid Care Work in the New Gig Economy. That sounds like a, a very interesting project, and if time permits, I'll be asking you some questions about that. So we- welcome to the Royal.
Thank you.
Mr. MacFarlane, you are Angus MacFarlane.
Yes.
And you've prepared a statement for the Royal Commission dated the twenty-fifth of January, twenty twenty-three?
That's correct.
Uh, you've got a copy of the statement with you?
Yes, I do.
There's no changes to the statement?
No, there aren't.
And the contents are correct?
Yes.
And you are currently Branch Secretary of the Australian Services Union, New South Wales and A C T Services Branch.
Correct.
And that's a role that you've held since September twenty twenty-two.
Yes.
And in your work with the union, you've had considerable experience working with members in New South Wales and the A C T. In resolving workplace issues, representing members in enterprise bargaining negotiation, leading campaigns to improve funding, pay, conditions, training, workforce development for the members. And the members are, for the most part, uh, people who might be described as disability support workers. So the people like Zelda Riddell, who we've just, is that right?
Exactly, yes, thank you.
All right. So warm welcome to you to the Royal Commission. As the Chair said, you've both provided us with very extensive statements, setting out a, a lot of information. I wanna do the best that I can to cover the issues. So, Dr. McDonald, can I start with you? Uh, the work that you've done and the research you've done would no doubt have given you a very good insight into the profile of the workforce. And as you know, the, the Royal Commission for this hearing is looking at disability service providers and in effect their employees providing supports. But the workforce is broader than that, is it not? And can you give us an overview or a profile of the workforce?
I can give you a profile. Um, I could perhaps start by saying there's very poor data. Um, due mainly to the disagreg- disaggregation, um.
I got you to slow down a little bit. Sorry, I was going a bit fast, my apologies.
Okay, uh, it's, um, it's not possible to disaggregate the Australian Bureau of Statistics Occupational Category Aged and Disabled Carers. Um, so there is, you know, the estimates of the workforce estimates um, come from different sources and vary a bit, but it's, um, pretty clear, the N, the N D I S, um, workforce plan, the recent N D I S workforce plan and recent work by the National Skills Commission, um, have given a fair bit of information about the workforce, as does the, um, National Disability Services Workforce surveys. So the N D S support workforce is estimated to be about two hundred and forty-two thousand in twenty twenty. Um, most of this workforce is, um, personal care and support workers. Uh, and the, um, it's estimated that are, that about two thirds of that, of that workforce are home-based. Um, another twenty-three or four percent are community-based personal care and support workers. Um, and included in that personal, uh, care and support workforce worker category, um, there are ten percent who are allied health workers.
So what, what does that mean if we dig lower into the profile of that workforce? Is your research and the data available able to tell us sort of where, what the distribution may be? Is it located mostly in metropolitan centres? Or, uh, do we see the, the workforce really spread evenly throughout Australia? Have you captured that data?
I haven't captured specifically the, um, I'm, I, I'm, I think it, it's potentially there in the, probably there in the National Skills Commission, um, Care and Support Workforce Study. Um, that doesn't distinguish between age care and disability support. Um, it may also be captured by the N D S. But I, I'm, I'm not aware of that breakdown. Um, I can tell you a bit about the demographics of that workforce. Um, it's a highly feminized workforce.
It's about, what, sixty-six percent?
Yes, although that's in the care and support workforce generally. I think it may be higher um, in just the, um, disability support workforce. Um, slightly higher representation of non-English speaking background workers and overseas workers, like forty percent of those um, belong to one of those two groups, um, where the, across the workforce overall, that's more like thirty-two percent. So, um, and it's a slightly older workforce than the, uh, total labour market, uh, workforce.
What do you mean by older?
Has a slightly older profile.
Yep.
There are a higher proportion of workers who are aged forty-five and over. However, there is an increasing, um, proportion, it has been a new entry of younger workers too, so, um, that's shifting as well.
Right. So what, so coming back to the profile that you've described, what sort of qualifications will support workers have within the prof- that profile?
Okay, the, the profile of workers, um, is also, you talked about workers in service providers. I think it's, um, worth looking at the, um, there's a very varied profile across bits of the industry that's not about geographic dispersion, but about where people are located. So if we take the disability support work for, workers, workforce as the largest of that, um, group, they could be employed by registered or unregistered and, or unregistered service providers, employed directly by people with disability, or, um, employed through, um, have their employment intermediated by third parties such as platforms, um, and they may be employees and independent contractors and.
Just to jump in there. So essentially, we're talking about people who are paid to do this work.
Paid workers.
We're not talking about unpaid volunteers and that sector is sort of, if it does exist, which it does, that's not part of looking at the profile or.
No, this is the paid support workforce, um, and paid paid su- support workforce who are paid primarily by N D I S funding. There are some other forms of funding, but it's primarily by the N D I S.
My apologies for interrupting.
It's okay. Um, so the structure of that employment, um, uh, has, is characterized by very, very high levels of part-time work, um, uh, very high levels of casual work. We, there are about thirty-four percent is one, is one, the probably the most accurate estimate of the, um, extent to which the workforce is casualised and of the other um, sixty-six percent who are permanent, um, about eighty percent of those workers are part-time.
Right, and now, Mr. MacFarlane, I'm gonna come to you because that's got some implications. We have a workforce where it's highly casualised, part-time, and those demographics uh, will have some implications, I think, to the workforce issues that you ought to speak to. But can I ask you about the qualifications of support workers? For your members, what qualifications are required? And we've heard a bit this morning of Cert or a Certificate two, three, four. I think Ms. Riddell referred to six and seven. What does that all mean?
So, um, in the National Disability Insurance Scheme, um, there is no requirement for a support worker to have any qualification whatsoever. Um, all workers are covered by, um, a mandatory code of conduct that applies to them. There are some online unaccredited sort of info videos that you're encouraged to watch when you start working in the sector, but beyond that, there's no requirement in the N D I S to have a qualification as a support worker.
But some people do have.
But many, many do, yes.
Why would you have a qualification if it's not required?
I think because, uh, many people, um, it used to be requirements by various state governments or employers over time. Uh, I think people also that want to, you know, ha- um, are, are committed to, uh, I guess, seeking further training and development. And when they were able to access that more easily, I think there are access issues now, which I can talk about later. Um, so my, uh, understanding from, uh, our members is probably around two thirds of support workers in reality do have a Cert three or Cert four.
So tell me what Cert three and Cert four means. Assume I know nothing about that.
Okay, so, so Certificate three, um, is a qualification in in individual supports, which you can have a focus on disability or age care. Um, and it involves around seventy hours of classroom, um, face-to-face learning and approximately a hundred and twenty hours of workplace, uh, training and assessment. To complete a Certificate three, there are around seven core units you have to do, and then, uh, six elective units. And the units are in things like supporting independence and wellbeing, communication at work, working legally and ethically, safe work practices, um, what I would call as foundational, generalist, um, uh, skills that are important are as a foundation to working in the sector.
So, can I ask you this? The N D I S has a capability framework.
Hmm.
And that's intended to sort of set out, as I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, the sort of minimum requirements on capability for support workers.
Yeah, they describe it as it's the government's expectation of what goods, of what support work should look like, so.
Let me put it, is it the sort of lowest common denominator or is this aspirational highest?
It's everything. It's basically the, 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 the broad ecosystem of, of a diverse workforce that is required to meet equality and D I S for participants.
So if people don't have a Certificate three or Certificate four and they're unqualified, then how, you know, how do you, uh, meet these expectations of the capability framework?
I think it's really difficult and near impossible to, to do that without that support. Um, so there's the, um, there's the regulatory environment of the, the code of conduct, the capability framework. There's also, I think, just the contemporary expectations of people with disability that the N D I S has rightly given them to be able to receive uh, and have choice and control over really diverse, uh, services that support their needs and aspirations. Um, that is difficult to achieve in a workforce that doesn't have any, any base training, uh, in, uh, sort of disability theory and practice, but also some more specialised training in the particular kinds of types of disability or identities or supports that are required.
All right. Do- Dr. McDonald, any comments from your view on this issue?
Um, I need to say that I think it's pretty clear, it's expressed as the expectation of disability support work. And I think, um, you know, there can be some, you know, I think there's sometimes a bit of a debate about whether there are values rather than skills expressed in that, in those kinds of capability frameworks. But I know that, um, in the U K, for example, where values-based recruitment is has progressed and been thought about a lot more than it has here, they're clearly, it's clearly about behaviours that, um, can be supported and facilitated through training. So, um, I, I'm, I'm saying that because I think that whether you co- want to call parts of the requirements of that framework skills or values doesn't make any difference to the need for training is really clear, um.
I turn to a different topic and that is the remuneration for disability support workers. The Royal Commission has heard and we've read the research reports that that in the disability sector, there's a sense that the work performed by disability support workers is extremely important work, has to be done from a rights-based, trauma-informed approach. There are a lot of requirements on people, but that work is not valued in the same way that work in other industries may be valued. And that undervaluation of work manifests in low rates of pay for disability support workers. So Mister McFarlane, in your statement, paragraph thirty six, you set out the rates of pay for support workers by reference, I think, to the award and the commissioners have heard about something called the Shads Award. I will spare everybody how modern awards work in terms of of work value and determining classifications and rates of pay. If anyone's interested in that topic, we can deal with that separately. But uh looking at what the rates of pay are, can you give us a sort of sense about what the average annual remuneration would be for a support worker? And in answering that question, whether that's um depends on whether the person might be working casually or full time and whether that has a bearing in working out uh average remuneration. Is that something you can comment on?
Uh, yes, so I think that, um, so the minimum hourly rate for a disability support worker is thirty dollars and forty five cents. Which is in my statement for a permanent disability support worker and for casual, it's thirty eight dollars and seven cents. And I should say, um, that is just seven cents more per hour than the minimum wage for a retail worker. Now, we've spoken about the complexity of the work and the skills required, um, and we know that those award rates are one thing for the hourly rate, but if you're looking at annual pay, to your point that you raised, we need to consider that this is a casualised workforce with mo- predominance of short hour, part-time work, um, with limited uh progression. Uh, short engagements, et cetera. So, um, my guess is, and I I just in terms of annual wages, I imagine and from memory, uh, you're looking at um between forty to sixty thousand dollars. Um, and it depends on the hours that someone's engaged, but it's a low-paid uh industry. And even if you are on an enterprise agreement, um, uh, most of the enterprise agreements in this industry are are not, the pay levels are not higher than the award. They might have some condition variances that make them better off overall, but the pay is generally always pegged to the award. So those award rates are pretty standard.
When when we're talking about working out those rates, the Fair Work Commission will decide the the modern awards, the terms and conditions with the Fair Work Act and then set out the classifications and the rates of pay. But, um, employers or groups of employers can come together and they might negotiate with their employees what's called an enterprise bargaining agreement. So the award's still there, but the agreement might have different terms and conditions that might result in some cases higher rates of pay or different additional leave requirements or things like that. Is that right?
It is right, but one missing um piece of that description is that in the N D I S, the the prices that the the are capped. So the amount of money, um, the end, the agency makes an assumption that people are paid the correct minimum wage. And so it funds its packages based on the correct minimum wage, but there's, there's also caps there. So there's no capacity in the funding that you get as a provider to really pay beyond the award minimums as well. So that's a regulatory cap that makes it very difficult for a single provider or indeed a group of providers to uh negotiate with their workforce uh above that.
So the traditional idea is that employees, perhaps represented by a union and employer negotiating. It's ring-fenced by the N D I S, so it sort of sets a context to it. And that's a little bit different to other industries, isn't it?
That is right, yes.
Uh, in terms then of that process of negotiating enterprise agreements. Uh, are either of you able to say how frequent enterprise agreements are in this sector? And the extent to which uh workers are more likely to be on the modern award or to be employed pursuant to enterprise agreements?
Uh, a recent um financial benchmarking survey undertaken for the N D I S, um, identified ten percent of the respondents to that survey had an enterprise agreement. Um, and, um, I have looked through those, not all of them. Um, and I, it's, you know, as Angus said, you know, that there, the pay, the, if there's pay above, you know, some, one of them, I think, had for example, that, um, it was ninety five cents, um, was the above the award rate, was one, um, above award pay. And another one was that a commitment to providing point oh two five percent above the award rate, so.
Well, Doctor McDonald, you've mentioned in earlier in answer to a question about something called independent contractors.
Hmm.
So, these are people who are not treated as employees, but in effect sell or give their you know, labour at their own price and they set their own price or whoever it is that might need it. One of the matters that you've dealt with in your statement is looking at independent contractors. But the sort of current vogue word of this is the gig economy. And, uh, what are you seeing in terms of any trends of support workers saying I think I can actually get a better rate of pay, better conditions. I haven't got all of the regulatory arrangements sitting on my shoulders. I think I'm dying to see if I can say I'm here to do your services, I'm happy to be employed directly. Are you seeing a trend in in that?
There's a trend, I don't, and again, I don't know the numbers, it's very, very poor data. But, um, uh, one, um, platform that that, uh, works with disability support workers that's large, um, maintain that they have ten thousand. Um, care and support workers um on their platform and they um require workers on their platform to be independent contractors. But independent contractors may work in direct engagements with um people with disability. Or they may also um be working through service providers. Um, the question of independent workers, independent contractors motivations for working in those roles, I think is, um, not clear. I don't think there's any data. Um, I know, um, that, um, where, if it's through digital platforms, um, it's those platforms advertise and, um, promote the idea of contracting as a better way. So I, you know, it, there's mixed information about why people do this. We do know, as Angus mentioned, there's a large um proportion of multiple job holders in this industry. Um, the, one estimate is fourteen percent. We think perhaps it could be higher because of very short hours work. So people are putting jobs together. The workforce is not workers who work here and workers who work here. The workers, many workers work across different forms of employment with registered service providers with individual people. Um, requiring support. So, um, there is also, have, there has been quite a bit of um talk, I suppose, about, um, you know, the idea that you can get paid a lot better on a platform and I think probably some people can. I think that I, I, my research suggests that there is a bifurcation of the workforce. Um, more experienced workers, um, who have been trained and had experience in uh with formal registered service providers, um, can attract high rates of pay. Um, less experienced workers who are, there are very many of on these platforms um, tend to, are offering very low prices. And, um, the information that we do have that's published, um, suggests that the average rates on pl- some platforms, and I'm going by the platforms, I I don't know, you know, there's so little um visibility of workers who work directly, um, but the pattern on the platforms is is this bifurcation. And inexperienced workers, um, offer, and again, in my experience, in in my research see, see the casual rate as the rate, um, don't take account of the costs and the loss of entitlements and benefits. So that those workers, um, will seek a pay rate that's equivalent to the casual award, um, but in fact is effectively under that.
Well, that, that's because they don't have their protections under the Fair Work Act in relation to uh unfair dismissal and workers' rights or the national employment standards and maybe not superannuation. Or the insurances around work ethic and safety. So those costs are not factored into the.
By by the individual workers, um, and the platforms sell their services on the basis that there are less, their their services to pr- to individuals are much cheaper than providers, but that's because, um, they don't pay for training, they don't pay for supervision. They don't, um, in have any quality assurance processes.
So just finishing on this topic is there's very little research at the moment as to what the prevalence is. Uh, how these systems work and then what the broader implications might be. Is that right?
There's limited research, yeah.
Well, how does, uh, what are then, that takes me to career paths. And, uh, when the N D I S was established, I think there was an expectation that this would be a very significant uh opportunity to grow employment, opportunities in Australia. But also to give people coming into this sector career paths. Uh, in terms, Doctor McDonald, in terms of your research, have you seen over the last uh eight to ten years, say, a a change in the way in which support workers now have career paths in working for disability service providers? And Mister McFarlane, I'd welcome your input on career paths as well.
Uh, disability support workers coming in, um, don't have career paths. Uh, and that goes to the, it goes to the structure of work. The, um, the funding model, um, limits. The fun, the funding model, the service providers' responses to the funding model and the funding model's, um, impact, I think, on the workforce more generally has been, um, establishing a flexible workforce. Uh, with on-demand workers who are able to, um, meet, um, individual, uh, clients of the provider's, um, requirements and variable, um, requirements. So that's led to increasing large workforces of less experienced casual workers with shorter hours, who, um, also because of the funding model um, which at that level, um, expects ninety percent on what the N D I A calls labour utilisation. Which is actually face-to-face contact, doesn't provide for training, supervision. Um, it does, provides for training supervision, sorry, but, um, limited training and supervision, limited peer support. Limited, um, contact with peers. And that takes, I think, takes away the opportunity, uh, for workers to workers don't get established so quickly. There's a very, very high turnover rates of newer workers. Um, and the funding model also doesn't particularly provide for, um, it doesn't provide for, um, increases as workers stay and, um, become more experienced. If they're in those casual roles, they tend not to do that. So there is no career path with that increasing, um. Does that make sense? I'm not sure if I'm not making, if I'm making sense there.
No, definitely. What, what do you see, Mister McFarlane, from your members in terms of coming into the industry and seeing this industry or sector as an opportunity to build a career path?
I think many of my members that come into the N D I S want the N D I S to provide for them such a career path. Because they are committed to supporting people with disability. That's what drives them to this sector. But it doesn't, um, provide it for them. I think, you know, the promise of the N D I S to people with disability was that they would have choice and control for a diverse range of services to meet their needs and aspirations. That meant having available a s- a skilled and capable workforce that can provide generalist but also specialised supports. Um, but to what my colleague Fiona has said around issues to do with fragmentation of work. No training requirements, but not just that I should say no time to be trained. Um, and people working across multiple providers, everything's, um, uh, sort of fragmented like that. It's, it's really impossible for people to have these career paths and it's turning workers away. It's why we see huge churn. Something that, um, we haven't mentioned is that, um, one in four workers are leaving the sector a year. And ultimately, it's, it's, it's a real issue for p- participants because they're not getting that.
On that uh rate of attrition and the high turnover churn, Doctor McDonald, this is something you've uh commented on in your statement, I think commissioners at paragraph twenty eight and thirty six. What, uh, has your research told you about the retain- retention or attrition rates? I think we've spotted a recent report from the McKell Institute that, uh, suggests that the rates of attrition for N D I S support workers is probably higher than retail and other sectors. And commissioners will get that report for you.
The, um, the National Skills Commission looked at, um, attrition of in the care and support workforce, which includes age care workers as well as disability support workers. Um, through a study that gathered data over the last decade, um, or a little bit longer than that. They found only that three in five workers spend less than three years, um.
Less than five years?
Three in five workers spend less than, less than three years.
Less than, less than three years in the whole of the industry.
Yeah, so they come in, but only three in five of every, every worker who comes in in that, came in in that period, le- stayed less than three years. Um, ten percent spent nine years, stayed in for nine years. And the turnover was highest amongst young people and is a really significant problem in the first year.
Would that reflect what Ms. Riddell was talking about? And I don't know if you had a chance to read her statement, you may not have. One of the issues she identified was the attitude within the community about working in this sector. That the assumption might be that you're only doing this job because you have to or that the sense is that it is uh, a job with very low skill and so the the perception about doing this work, would, do you think that might be a factor? As your research revealed that?
My research is what has been with current workers who, you know, always the first thing they say is they love their jobs.
Hmm.
Um, but they don't say they can stay in their jobs. Um.
Why, what's the reason?
The, we've talked about, uh, the unemployment and the multiple, it's very, very difficult to sustain. Um, to earn a, to earn a living wage when you're trying to patch together multiple jobs and multiple jobs with variable working time requirements. Workers say you can't plan or organise your life. Some workers, um, you know, that I've interviewed talk about inability to actually organise anything regular outside their work. Let alone, um, try to keep a space in their work um, for, say, a a a third job that they know is going to be every Friday. Um, they, they need to be available for this other provider who wants them to be available all the time. So workers who work seven days a week but only, you know, work twenty five hours. Workers who have, there's a lot of engagement of permanent part-time workers on low hours regular contract, regular hours contracts, but with this availability to be, you know, to be avail- requirement or expectation to be available above and beyond that.
Is it almost like being on call, that with very little notice?
Yeah.
Somebody doesn't turn up for a shift, but we know that, um, you know, Mary might be available, so you call her, if she comes in, she might do a double shift, but she may not have planned that in advance.
Yeah, so, yeah, and so that leads not only to inability to study, inability to do, um, other things at work, it also leads to, um, insecurity of income and uncertainty about ongoing employment. So, um, I don't, I have not interviewed and asked workers who come in and spend their first year in work what, what causes them to leave, but I know that those are very common conditions across the workforce. As are the experience of not enough time to do your job well. Um, inability to contact somebody when you're worried about or you've got a question. Um, or you're concerned about something, you can't get a supervisor on the phone. Um, so there's feeling that you're not doing a good job. And that feeling that you're not doing a good job, experienced workers talk about that as a result of seeing other casuals. Um, coming in who don't, who are unfamiliar with people, unfamiliar with requirements, um. Um coming in who don't, who are unfamiliar with people, unfamiliar with requirements um. But also themselves not having the time and and the issues that have been raised about um inability to. You know, not knowing something's wrong, but not knowing if you can report it, how to report it. So um. I think all of those things, I don't, you know, feed intentions to leave and one of the things, you know, uh workers do talk about. Lack of consistency, lack of continuity, the very things that are connected to quality of care and quality of support in. Uh uh in, well, in my study and in international research, um are the things that workers are distressed. About um and that they name, they name that plus um pay. When they talk about um intending to leave.
Uh Mister McFarlane, in terms of the work that you do in supporting members. Uh have you seen similar trends in terms of the attrition, but the reasons why people are leaving?
Um yes, so the attrition rates are, um as you said, really high um and um. It that report that you referred to um from Mckell talked about it being higher than hospitality and retail. And we do see that all of the time and I think it's a combination of factors as to why people. Uh leave. I could sort of describe it almost like a game of snakes and ladders in the N D I S. You you get a job in the disability sector, you're really passionate about that, that's a ladder. Then suddenly you find it's only a short hour casual contract, that's a snake. You seek a second job. Uh to support your income and your family, that's a ladder, but then you find for that participant, there's no training at all for their. Very particular disability and you're worried about doing the job safely and well. So it it it's. And these things compound upon themselves. You're working for multiple employers. Uh you you don't have entitlements or recognition of your service in the scheme, you don't have training. You care a lot about the people you support, but you don't wanna put yourself or them at risk and and often people leave, they they're burnt out. They don't feel supported, they're working isolated. Um that's another thing, um the work is. Increasingly more complex because it's increasingly more isolated.
What do you mean by that?
So prior to the N D I S, um most of disability support work would have been provided. In a a group home setting or a home setting where there were uh other staff rostered. That you were working on a shift and you had a supervisor often on site. The N D I S uh has seen a rise in um. Workers working directly with participants in their own private residence or in community and that's a good thing, but what it has meant. Is that workers are more independent. Um they are expected to be uh responding, showing more initiative and judgment. Uh and that requires uh you know more uh training and support and. I also would argue more pay because the complexity of the work has changed. Um so the. It's also very stressful in an environment where you're making lots of um decisions and judgements. Without supervision and support independently. Um and that's another reason why I think people are finding it too hard.
I wanted to, just before the Commissioners might ask you some questions, to the way forward and. Uh one of the tasks of the Royal Commission is to think about the types of recommendations. To governments and perhaps even recommendations to those running the services. Are there any concrete improvements that you think that could be made to support the disability support workforce? So that skilled, qualified workers remain in the industry. And that you are building career paths that uh one would hope would lead to. High and better quality of support for clients. What do you think based on your respective experience as a researcher and. On on the ground would make a difference. Doctor McDonald, can I start with you?
Yeah, I think first that any um. Any changes need to actually see um the system as a whole. It's not a case of um. How do we make it better for the support workers and registered service providers or unregistered service providers, because each of, each changes in. Any changes in each of these areas impacts across the whole workforce. Um the workforce isn't. Segmented such that only, some workers only work in direct employment. Um and some workers, I mean, there will be some workers who o- only do that, but a lot of workers work across. Um different forms of employment and different providers and any change in one area is going to impact on another. So I think problematically, one of the. Um pressures on registered service providers currently is competition from unregistered service providers. And uh third-party platforms and other organisations who um. Provide a cost benefit to the individual person who's trying to make their support. Plan funding stretch as far as possible. That undermines the capacity of registered service providers to um uh. To provide training, to provide um the the kinds of secure employment that could be the basis of. A um a pathway and if if. If individual employers can't take responsibility, aren't able to have, to be the the source of um. That security for a worker and and a pathway, that has to be a system-wide responsibility. It can't be. The responsibility of an individual. Directly engaging their own worker and it can't be a responsibility of a worker who's in lots of short hours jobs. So that there needs to be some kind of systemic response and I think the beginnings of that would be mandatory registration. And I, and some form, some collective arrangements such as that allowed for portable entitlements. Um both leave and training, but I also think. And this is from my experience of interviewing workers who are directly engaged or work through platforms. Um workers need. Um some kind of organisational support. There are a lot of workers who um. Are very insecure in um the, in dealing with the complexities of their. Interpersonal relation, you know, their interpersonal relationships in in individual support as well as in service providers. Um and they're totally isolated and they will leave their jobs because they don't. You know, they can't manage those things by themselves. There needs to be um some kind of collective response across the system and I've suggested. Something, you know, of akin to a, you know, an umbrella type body like a group training organisation or regional bodies. Perhaps built on the L A Cs.
Right. Uh Mister McFarland, I think you also raise portable training, portable leave. And national registration as well. Are there any additional factors that you think would. Provide concrete improvements for the way forward?
Yeah, I just, I just wanna emphasise one particular point, which is that the N D I S um. Lot of the fragmentation that exists in the workforce that does drive people away, the multiple jobs, the casual short-hour jobs. Is, I think we have to understand fundamentally a feature of the design of the N D I S. The concept of choice and control, the fact that not every single participant will want a full-time support worker and their needs will change. I fully support choice and control, by the way, but what I'm trying to say though is, if that's what the. The system has led to, I think the system, there needs to respond to that and a way to do that is through things like. Portable entitlement schemes where a worker's service would be recognised to the scheme. So if you changed from participant to participant, you would carry with you your sick leave, your annual leave, your long service leave. Whether you're employed directly or a casual or a contractor and that would give you a sense of security. In the scheme and recognition for your service to the N D I S and the same thing with training. The I, you know, how can someone who's casual here, part-time here, on a gig app over here. Take the time to complete a certificate three or certificate four. And the concept of portable training is that. Workers in the N D I S would get access to ongoing accredited professional development like other professions. But importantly, they would accrue the paid time to do that. Because study leave does not exist in the N D I S and speakers have spoken about that previously. So their their concepts that um. Our members support and we, and I know through many discussions that. Service providers, many service providers, advocates and participants support those solutions. Um to fix that at that scheme level. And obviously worker registration, I think. Um would form a part of how you would implement those things. And I think if you had positive worker registration. I refer to it as positive because the registration would provide workers with secure employment and training and professional development. That would be very supported by the workforce.
Well, thank you both for uh preparing very detailed statements and sharing uh. Your uh experiences and Doctor McDonald for your research. The Commissioners might have a few questions for you.
Yes, thank you very much. Uh I'll ask first Commissioner McKeown whether he has any questions for you.
Uh thank you. I just want to understand better when, to both of you, when you're talking about. Uh addressing the uh isolation that individuals, that workers are experiencing with working with individual clients. And things like that. So Doctor McDonald, at paragraph one hundred and twelve. In your statement, you suggest a sort of a collective workforce development uh initiative. So if you had that, that would address the concerns around isolation and supervision and support and workers feeling supported. So why would you need a mandatory registration system?
Uh because you'd have, I think you'd have to have mandatory registration to identify the workers. Um perhaps if, uh unless all workers had to go through one of those bodies to um. Uh to to be, or or the person, the individual. Um person with N D I S funding had to go through one of those kinds of bodies to engage, to to engage a worker. I think it amounts to the same thing. In my um.
And how would that rectify pay issues and other issues that you've identified? When we're talking more about the individual client getting uh, you know, the right support, but then that worker feeling supported. What they could do with their peers through a collective workforce development initiative.
It would, it would connect participants and workers to an organisation that provided information. About the correct pay level, provided information. I think at the moment, people. People who um directly engage their workers get very little support around how to do that. How to do that well. And I think it's, um, you know, we know from um small business employment. Issues that it's, there's a lot to deal with. Um it's it's not a simple thing, but um. You know, you could potentially have separate um organisations for people to support them, to self-manage. Uh user-led organisations, I think I suggested, there are some examples of these in the U K that support. Support people to um manage their employment of their workers well. Um the. The um body that I was suggesting was to ensure that workers are linked to the system. Um and I I do think it's from my experience, um. Inexperienced workers in self-managed relationships, um work relationships do encounter. A lot of um instances where they are unsure about what. If what they're doing is okay and need needs advice and support outside that relationship.
Thank you.
The um the the core issue in all of this is actually the quality of care. Uh it's a quality issue. The Age Care Royal Commission uh. Looked at workforce issues with that lens on the quality of care that people in nursing homes were receiving. Or o- other age care services. They, they recommended almost a star rating system so that consumers of those services. Would have a much, and and in that star rating was staff training, staff skills, um. Reliability and continuity of care. Is that something that could focus the mind of providers as employers? To bring greater stability to its workforce, to up the quality of its workforce?
Um look, I think it wouldn't uh go to addressing the core issue, which is around the fact that uh. An individual provider uh is limited in what they can do or because of the way that the N D I S is designed, so. Um there isn't uh funding for, you know, the disability sector is a fully government-funded scheme, there's no co-payments etcetera. And prices and packages are capped. So what it means is that provider, an individual provider. Um despite the best intentions in the world, can't uh. Provide study leave for its employees to all undertake a qualification and an ongoing professional development. So I think that it. Uh a s- a star rating system like that would only make sense if there was an enabling environment for people to uh. To reach five stars. That that that's, that's uh in terms of the industrial um considerations like. Do you provide good jobs, good training, career pathways?
Um and yeah, similarly, I think a star rating system relies on consumers having information. Having access to that system, um it, and I think, and and understanding. How that system works. And I think, I don't, I don't think we have, you know, the kind of um. Perfect market in which a star rating, and which goes, is another way of saying what Angus has just said, I think, that. Um would mean that a star rating system would be particularly um helpful.
I suppose it wasn't specifically meaning in that same sense, but the fact that. Uh quality was put at the forefront and quality is made up multiple factors. And that also not only for the um client, but also for people who might wanna work in an organisation. But thank you for your response to that question.
Very briefly, how would a registration system work for disability support workers?
Uh well, I believe that um. There currently is uh N D I S screening systems that work, uh sorry, that exist, which is, which is, and and there's uh some registration systems that. Work in Victoria, which I understand will be evidenced on later stage, which are voluntary. But the way that I see a positive registration system would be that you'd be linking the. Uh risk-based uh screening that workers need to do with also a process of registering and credentialing workers so that as. As you are coming into the sector, you would then, as a part of this register, um. Be able to access and accrue uh training and uh leave uh entitlements. So looking at how you would. Develop like leave authorities that exist and training authorities into a central register. So it'd be multi. Um functional and purposeful for workers and I think for participants um to do it like that.
I see, thank you. And you mentioned such matters as portable entitlement schemes and. Portable uh ongoing accredited professional development. Are these matters for industrial tribunals?
Um no, because the, uh establishing a portable entitlement scheme, they do exist in other jurisdictions. And they're established um by government because of the way that the um requirements to pay into it or how they're regulated. So. They exist in state levels uh for long service, uh but we're suggesting they could exist federally for the N D I S because of the way that it's. Uh funded. Um and in terms of training, um the training uh requirements. Uh and standards and support and funding for training is something that I um is all. Designed and controlled by the agency, N D I A, or the Quality and Safeguarding Framework a- and the government. Um what industrially could happen, I guess, is that if those things were in place, um you could then. See how you recognise that in the awards uh system, which currently don't adequately provide for. Uh pay pathways for support workers.
Thank you very much and thank you both for your statements and for the evidence you've given in the panel. We greatly appreciate your assistance.
Thank you, Commissioners. Could I just tender the material? So if you could mark Mister McFarlane's statement, exhibit thirty-two dash three.
Which one was that?
Mister McFarlane?
Yes.
And there's an accompanying document, which is a submission to the Royal Commission from the A S U. If the accompanying document could be marked thirty-two dash three point one.
Yes, both of those documents will be admitted into evidence and given the markings Miss Eastman has indicated.
And Doctor McDonald's statement, i- if you could mark that exhibit thirty-two dash four.
Yes.
And there are a number of documents, including Doctor McDonald's C V and some publications. If they could be marked thirty-two dash four point one through to thirty-two dash four. Point three.
Yes, the documents identified by Miss Eastman will also be admitted into evidence and given the markings she has indicated.
And if we could uh adjourn now, say for ten minutes?
Ten minutes. We'll resume at twelve fifteen.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned. The Royal Commission is now in session.
The Royal Commission is now in session.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Our next witness is Mr Daniel Stubbs, I think often better known as Dan Stubbs. And he is the Victorian Disability Worker Commissioner. And uh Commissioners, you'll be aware that Mr Stubbs has provided to the Royal Commission a very detailed statement. So I think we just need to take your oath or affirmation.
Has or?
I don't think that's occurred yet.
Mr Stubbs, uh thank you for your very detailed fifty-nine page statement. Which uh is extremely interesting. You can uh. Take the former judge out of the constitution, but you can't take the constitution out of the former judge. So I'll be coming back to the constitution a little later. But thank you very much for coming through the Royal Commission. Thank you for your statement. If you'd be good enough uh to follow the instructions of my associate. Who's situated opposite to you, she will administer, I think it's the affirmation to you.
Thank you, Chair.
I will read you the affirmation. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth? The whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you, Mr Stubbs. I'll now ask Miss Eastman to ask you some questions.
Thank you. Mr Stubbs, you've got a copy up, sorry, you don't have a copy of your statement with you, but you've checked your statement. And there's one correction that you want to make to the statement, so can I deal with that?
Yes, that's correct. Paragraph two hundred and six, yeah.
Paragraph two hundred and six, there's an internal reference. And on the third line, at the end of the line, where it says this reform is described at paragraph one hundred and twenty-seven. Then that should now read, this reform is described at paragraph one hundred and twenty-eight. So with that correction, are the contents of the statement cor- true?
Yes.
So I want to start just with uh people who may not know you and a little bit of your background. You were appointed the inaugural Victorian Disability Worker Commissioner in September twenty nineteen by the Victorian Governor and Council. But before that appointment, you were the C E O of the Inner Melbourne Community Legal, it was a community legal centre.
Yes.
And you've worked uh extensively in the community sector as a lawyer and then more. Uh recently as a leader, but you've also worked in developing countries. You've looked at research and you've worked on programmes concerning disability. And also assisting the development of international and national peak bodies for people with disability. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Uh and in terms of your formal qualifications, you hold a Bachelor of Laws and Bachelor of Commerce with honours. And you also have graduate diplomas in development economics and legal practice. Is that right?
That's correct.
And you've told us that you are a person who lives with disability and have a sight impairment.
Yes, that is correct, Miss Easton.
So I um want to ask you about the experience. As the first Victorian Disability Worker Commissioner and what you've observed over the time that you've held this role. But before we get to that, we probably need to lay some groundwork in terms of the disability worker regulation scheme. In Victoria, how it came about, how it works and what it does, before we get into some of your reflections. Now, I know you've dealt with this in some detail in the uh in the written uh statement. But if I can start with understanding how Victoria came to have this scheme and what was it about Victoria? That led to introducing the scheme. Are we right in understanding that there was a number of inquiries? Into the provision of disability services? And out of those inquiries came a number of recommendations for reform. And among those recommendations for reform was to set up something like a commission. But a commission that would oversee the disability workforce in Victoria. Is there anything you you want to sort of re- say in relation to how and why the scheme was established?
The main inquiry was a parliamentary inquiry, a Victorian parliamentary inquiry that recommended uh the establishment. Of this commission or the Victorian Disability Worker Commission. And another inquiry that also informed that was an obudsman's inquiry at around that time. Then there was a range of processes, such as consultation by government, et cetera.
And when the uh scheme was established, it required legislation. And in twenty seventeen, the Victorian Government consulted to design and to identify the features. Of what would be a registration and accreditation scheme. And the result of that consultation was the Disability Service Safeguards Bill twenty eighteen. It was introduced into the Parliament in twenty eighteen and passed into law in August twenty eighteen. But the scheme itself did not commence until the first of July twenty twenty. Is that right?
That's correct.
And the purpose of the scheme is, as you say in your statement, to achieve, but it seeks to achieve. The promotion of quality, safety and responsiveness, together with longevity in the disability workforce. In Victoria. And to achieve those objectives, the scheme provides for the registration. Of qualified and suitable disability workers and disability students. It sets standards of registration and accreditation. It seeks to strengthen the safeguards for people with disability who access disability services. It facilitates access by persons with a disability to information and services provided by the disability workforce. And then there's a a number of other measures that are all directed at improving the standards to achieve quality, safety, responsiveness. And longevity. That's a a broad summary of section six of the Act.
Yes, that, that's exactly right.
There's some guiding principles that operate with the Act and they're set out in section seven, one of the Act, and they're described in this way. That the rights, um that the guiding principles are based on people with disability. In the provision of disability services should have the same rights as other members of the community. And those rights should be respected for their human worth and people with disability be treated with dignity as individuals. People with disability have a right to live free from abuse, neglect and exploitation. They have a right to realise the individual capacity for physical, social, emotional and intellectual development. Choice and control over their own lives, access to information and communicate in a manner appropriate to their needs. And then uh provisions around children, but a right to choose disability workers with the values, skills and qualifications. That meet their need and to access services which support their quality of life. So they're the guiding principles. Uh do they, do you consider those guiding principles to reflect any of the rights in the Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disabilities?
Oh, yes, very much so, Miss Easton. I I think they're in line with some of the, in my view, some of the key. Uh provisions of the Convention on the Rights of People with Disability, um with regard to, well. One, things like safety and uh freedom from abuse and neglect, uh as well as other provisions around. Um uh providing information to people with disability and also around supporting. Full access to community, which are all in the convention.
Does the Disability Services Safeguards Act refer specifically to the C R P D?
No, I don't believe it does.
And do you know whether in uh the consultations and the approach to establishing the scheme? To meet the objectives that we've just spoken about and to operate by these guiding principles was informed in any way by the C R P D?
Not to my knowledge, but of course that was before my engagement.
And uh we heard yesterday from a service provider operating in Victoria. And talking about human rights, that the Victorian Charter of Rights and Responsibilities is also. Uh an instrument that the service provider had regard to. So does the Victorian Charter of Rights and Responsibilities have any bearing on? The functions that you discharge and all the way in which the Act operates?
Yes, very much so. We uh take into account the provisions of the Charter. Of- often with respect to how we deal with complaints, uh how we take a person-centered approach. And how we deal with workers who we're taking action against, which I'm happy to talk about later.
All right. So I wanted now turn to the way in which the scheme is administered. So it's established by the legislation. And there are three key parts to it. There is the commission, which you've described in paragraph eighteen of the statement. So the commission is an independent statutory body. It supports the board and the commissioner. In dealing with complaints and notifications about disability workers. And we'll talk more about the complaints and the registration scheme in a moment. So there's the commission. Then there, in addition to the commission, there is your role as commissioner. And you have the following statutory functions. Uh you also have functions in relation to complaints. But you have a function of issuing against unregistered disability workers orders. Which either on an interim, as interim prohibition orders or final prohibition orders. That might arise following an investigation of the commission. And you can issue public statements in relation to unregistered disability workers. And you have a range of functions to ensure the good orderly working under the Act. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
And there's also, the third uh element is the board. And the board registers and regulates registered workers. And it has a a range of functions. Could I broadly describe them as similar functions to what we might see in professional registration arrangements? For example, like the National Health Practitioners Regulations. So essentially, you're really looking at a scheme that sets standards and then has mechanisms of holding. The person who has to meet those standards to account. Is that, I'm trying to summarise that very broadly.
Yes, that's a fair observation.
So part of the the model is to facilitate the making of complaints and investigations. But the functions of the board is also very much focused on professionalising. The way in which disability support workers might operate in Victoria by drawing on some of the regulatory schemes that we know. Have worked to regulate, for example, health professionals. Would that be a fair summary?
Yes, it would be.
So uh I want to now get to how the scheme works and to whom the scheme applies. So when I've used the expression support worker or disability support worker, what does that mean for the. Uh legislation that you have responsibility for?
So a registered disability support worker is someone who. Undertakes a a range of different types of um disability work and it can take many forms. But it is about providing direct service to people with disabilities. Uh and. But it's not a practitioner, which I can come back to.
Okay. So that's a registered person, but what, is there a difference in? An unregistered disability support worker and a registered disability support worker in terms of the nature of the work? That they do or where they provide supports unless they're labour?
No, so the the registered disability worker is uh someone who's chosen to uh voluntarily register under the scheme.
So this.
That's right. The key feature of this is that registration is voluntary.
Correct.
No what, no disability support worker is required to register.
That's correct.
Why does someone register?
Someone registers with the scheme. Because they want to show that they meet certain standards. They want to illustrate that they're, they're dedicated to working in this sector. They have. Uh come to the realization that uh it somehow assists them, we believe. To illustrate their, their qualifications, the fact that they uh pass. Um relevant screenings such as police check, uh speak or otherwise communicate in English. Can also show they speak other languages.
Okay, thank you. Yes, thank you.
With respect to registered uh disability support workers, how many people have taken up the voluntary option of registering so far? Do you know?
Uh just over five hundred people have chosen to register.
And do you have a sense of uh the number of support workers who might have not opted into registration? And are described for the legislation as unregistered?
There would be many thousands. I th- I think. You, the the Royal Commission would be aware that it's, it's very hard to know the exact number of numbers of um disability workers in the sector. But it, it would be well over a hundred thousand workers in Victoria who are unregistered disability workers at this stage.
And uh the Chair's asked you some questions that I was going to come to about the benefits of registration or why. But before we get to that, can I ask you about what are the consequences of registering? It's the case, isn't it, that if you register, you voluntarily agree to take on obligations. To meet a code of conduct standard, is that right?
Uh not quite right, because we implement the code of conduct for all unregistered workers. That's, that's part of the legislation. The, a- as a regulation, the uh code of conduct is um being. Uh agreed, but been identified as the code of conduct for all, all unregistered workers in the sector. And the board has also introduced the code of conduct for registered workers to uh comply with as well.
So uh ta- being registered or under-registered doesn't mean that you have a separate code of conduct or standards you meet. That applies across the board regardless of registration. Is that right?
The, the code of conduct applies across the board and then there are other standards you're signing up to if you become a registered worker.
So what additional obligations does a support worker take on or accept if they become registered?
Will you undertake a national police check? That's uh, that's a one, one basic requirement. We also have a, we've, the, the board this year has introduced a continuing professional development. Standard, which I think you've already heard a little bit about today. And that requires ten hours of training each year. There's also uh the requirement to indicate that you speak or otherwise communicate in English. And we also publish what other languages people identify that they, they speak.
Now, with respect to the code of conduct, we know that there is an N D I S code of conduct. Is the Victorian Code of Conduct the same as the N D I S Code of Conduct?
Uh yes, it is.
And what was the reason to have a consistent approach on code of conduct between the Victorian? And the N D I S Code of Conduct? Was there any consultation or consideration about whether. Victoria might aim for higher standards than the N D I S Code of Conduct?
Wh- when adopting that code of conduct as the code of conduct under the legislation, the, the government did undertake. Um consultation, including with uh the N D I S Commission, as well as with the sector, the disability sector in Victoria. And it was widely recognised that uh it was, but would be most beneficial to have a consistent. Code of Conduct, providing that's, that minimum standard right across the sector in Victoria. Rather than having a different, even if a higher standard was chosen, a, a different code of conduct. Would not have been as uh helpful or useful as a regulatory tool. Than being consistent right across the disability sector.
And uh if uh a person working, a support worker is alleged to have contravened. The Disability Service Safeguards Code of Conduct. Can any person make a complaint about the disability worker's conduct?
Yes, anyo- anyone can make a complaint to us about uh contravention of the code of conduct, yes.
If a complaint is made, uh are there any formalities that have to be? If a complaint is made, uh are there any formalities that have to be uh met in making a complaint? How does a pos- any person make a complaint?
We we receive complaints via a range of um communication and we tend to seek to find out what what the best way to communicate that complaint is. Sometimes it's verbal, sometimes partly verbal, partly written. Uh and so there there's no direct, there there's no absolute formality. In- including we we can take them uh anonymously, it's it's not the preference, but there's there's a range of ways we can take complaints and that's all part of seeking to take a a person centred approach.
Is the way in which a a person can make a complaint, uh was that designed with and by people with disability to say this is the way where you feel comfortable in making a complaint or how we could go about making a complaint? So there's two aspects to that. One, being able to make a complaint and then the formalities in doing so. Was there consultation and co-design with people with disability about that?
I'm not aware of consultation about that before my time. After I commenced in the role, I undertook to speak to a wide range of uh disabled persons organisations and sought to understand what uh what would be most beneficial to people with disabilities and also to their families and and others who may make a complaint. And uh the myself and the staff of the commission worked hard to find ways to be flexible to take a complaint in whatever way it could come. If I can just add, in this man, I I I'm aware that, you know, it's it's the most difficult per- thing a person with disability can ever do.
Is to make a complaint against the person who provides them day-to-day support and assistance. Is the process of making a complaint confidential?
Yes, it is until and un- until the the complainant allows us to do something and do otherwise. Uh, for example, one step in a process uh can, we'll we'll often be providing the details of the complaint to the worker. Um.
Well, you'd have to do that, one, to undertake an investigation, but also to build in an element as a public body on procedural fairness. Is that right?
That's right, yes. So we're constantly weighing up those those different rights to privacy versus procedural fairness, natural justice, et cetera. So uh that's why if someone wants to retain that uh anonymity, that can limit our ability to take forward a matter.
One of the challenges in any uh system setting up complaints which require the victim to initiate action and the victim to have the courage of the complaint, and by that I mean the willingness to participate in a process, is that it puts a very heavy burden on a person to be the complainant to initiate that process. Would you agree?
Yes, I would agree.
And you have provision in the legislation to undertake own motion investigations, is that right?
Yes.
And to what what extent does that own motion power um enable you based on information that you might receive to be the person who initiates the complaint, in effect standing in the shoes of the victim?
Uh sorry, what's the exact question? Sorry.
So what, with the own motion power that you have, if you exercise that power, can you step into the shoes of the person with disability who may have made that complaint, but it's very fearful that they might be victimised or their supports might be uh withdrawn? Can you step in and make that complaint on their behalf or exercise that through your own motion power?
Yes, I can.
And do you have uh any published guidelines as to how you exercise that own motion power? So if a person, it might even be a family member or a neighbour, might uh want to make a complaint but not be identified and not be the person who has to have, in a sense, the courage of the complaint. Do you have gu- uh guidelines published as to when and how you exercise your own motion power?
No, I don't believe we have published that kind of information. No.
Uh is there anything that would help uh the public know when and how you would exercise an own motion power? At the moment?
I'm not sure if putting, i- if publishing information to the community w- with words like own motion powers would necessarily be that informative. I think uh receiving complaints and encouraging people to uh tell us when something's wrong. And if they're unwilling to take it forward, then us being able to um deal with that in different ways is, I believe, the 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 way forward there. And I'm sure we'll get to this, but a lot of our actions are of course also taken from not complaints but notifications.
Notifications are different to complaints because there are some matters that have to be reported and they're the form of mandatory no- notifications, that's what you're referring to. What sort of things would be mandatory notifications under the Victorian scheme?
Uh it's it's been a wide range of uh types of matters, but we've received mandatory notifications about uh in 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 the most serious cases, a- abuse and sexual abuse. Uh but also um where people have been uh maybe experienced extreme disrespect and taken choice and control away from them. And so it's, it does have that higher threshold of um a person of disability being at risk of harm. So then it is, it is limited, whereas complaints can have a a wider range of type of type of issues.
So with respect to both complaints and notifications, is the process at a very general level something like this? That the notification or complaint is received. The commission then may conduct an investigation into the complaint or notification. The outcome of an investigation may include uh the opportunity for conciliation between the relevant parties. An outcome may also include the prohibition orders being made. And I think you say in your statement you've made one prohibition order. So that's some of the pathways, but
Yes.
Can we assume also that some of the investigations might not lead to any further action? Would that be the case in in some complaints or notifications?
M- may not lead to uh the most the most serious action in terms of prohibition order. Yes, that's correct.
And would there be some complaints and notifications whe- when you receive the information? There's really not much that you can do about the subject matter of the complaint or notification and, in a sense, the person reaches a dead end?
I think that that would be the case in in some instances, like like any complaints body. Um we will often undertake a range of range of uh activities with a complainant that might involve assisting them to work with another complaints body. But we may also um what we call counsel a worker about how they've breached the code of conduct. That that's quite a common uh action we take to ensure the disability worker understands their obligations uh under the code of conduct, for example.
When you talk about counselling, is it an opportunity to provide some guidance to a support worker about the way in which they may practise or conduct themselves in a particular workplace?
Yes, so uh it it can be done either by by talking to that worker or by uh providing that that counselling in writing or uh or both. So sometimes we do, we do both to to follow up in writing to um as I say, explain their obligations to, under the code of conduct and how their conduct has um let's say fallen short of the the requirements under the code.
And uh part of the the outcomes might be that counselling, but is there part of the outcomes that might lead to ongoing education or suggestions, for example, that the support worker have a particular mentor or a a supervisor? I'm just drawing on some of the measures often used in the health regulation area.
So if if a worker is a registered worker, the board has that power to to require um those, you know, training and further supervision, et cetera. Uh if a worker is an unregistered worker, we don't really have that power to um require and particularly sort of monitor uh whether someone undertakes um that kind of on on ongoing um supervision, for example.
Right, so under the scheme, in terms of what the commission can do in response to investigating, conciliating, notifications and complaints. At what point do those complaints and notifications then go to the board? And what action does the board take?
Uh, so first of all, we we haven't had a complaint about a registered worker that would go to a board, uh go to the board as yet. But uh the um the commission staff will receive a complaint or notification, would receive a complaint and notification about a bo- a a registered board, registered disability worker. And uh make an assessment about um maybe urgency or risk. And that will affect whether perhaps immediate action needs to be be taken and we would take that obviously to um the board immediately, very quickly. Um but in most instances, it would be presented to the board at its next board meeting uh within a matter of weeks. Um and then options will have already, be, will 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 be um set out for the board.
Right. In terms of the numbers of complaints and notifications to date, uh you've told us in the statement that between the first of July twenty twenty two and the thirty first of December twenty twenty two, the commission received forty notifications. And the regulatory action in relation to those notifications was sixteen counselling, two referrals and fifteen decisions to take no further action. And um
Sorry, what paragraph?
This is paragraph one hundred and two.
Thank you.
So that's just a snapshot of the six month period and you've given us some other figures. It, in terms of the approach that you're taking at this very early stage of the life of the Royal uh of the Victorian Commission, is the approach that you want to take by counselling one where you're really seeking to support the disability support worker to remain in the industry but to develop further skills or to assist them in understanding some of the things that have gone wrong and what they could do to improve. I'm just trying to get into the detail of what the counselling is intended to achieve.
It it is mostly about taking um an educational and educative approach wherever we can. And uh I think we are at a point in time when we're seeking to and I, I mean the whole disability community, seeking to have, develop a more professionalised uh disability um sector and disability worker community. And so assisting workers to understand first of all what the commission's role is and uh that um workers have have a role in upholding the Code of Conduct is very much where we're at the moment, the approach we're taking in these first few years.
For the workers who may be employees of disability service providers, and some of them might be the larger providers, some of them might be mid-tier. The workers have also got their employment obligations to their employer. It, does any conflict arise in terms of the way in which the service providers as employers might respond to an incident? And how your commission deals with a complaint about a worker which I assume might occur in the workplace of a disability provider? How do you navigate what might be a number of different ways of responding to an incident, a complaint or a notification?
Most commonly, we would receive notifications from the employer themselves, but we do receive notifications from other disability workers. We, it, when we receive a notification from another disability worker, we will um consult with them about who else we can discuss that with. And usually they'll be quite open to uh us telling the organisation and talking to them about it. Um some, o- o- often that matter will have already been notified within the organisation. And it helps, I think it helps us and them to to know what we're each doing. Um and so it, to my knowledge, it hasn't arri- arisen that we we have a sort of a conflict with the employer body. Um. Now, I don't know always why a worker might come to us and not necessarily their employer. Um, yeah, there are many, as you've heard, there are many different workplaces and workplace cultures around the sector where um maybe complaints are more supportive than not. I I shouldn't speculate.
In in terms of the types of complaints and notifications that might be made, it's the case, isn't it, that there are also other regulatory bodies that might have responsibility to address the subject matter of the complaint or notification. That might be the police, for example.
Yes.
It could be the uh N D I S Quality and Safeguards Commissioner.
Yes.
It might be matters that come to the attention of the public advocate, the ombudsman. Um, how does the commission navigate all of these different regulatory arrangements? Do you have memorandum of understanding with any organisations? Do you have particular statutory functions that allow you to share information?
Yes, so we have agreements with um a number of those bodies, in fact all of those bodies. The the, and the working relationships are good. We have a good working relationship with uh with police when when we have to deal with the most serious matters. I'm I'm pleased to advise. Uh, we, we have a, an agreement with the N D I S Commission, but there's also reference in our act about we're required to share information with the N D S Commission when when there's a matter that comes in, that's uh that's funded by the N D I S. So we will regularly provide information about matters that come into uh the N D I S Commission as a matter of course.
In addition to information sharing, do you have uh referral schemes that if the subject matter of a complaint or notification is something that you look at that and say that's really a matter for the police, would you have a referral scheme to say we cannot be investigating criminal conduct, for example?
We generally will talk to the police and understand what action they are going to take. And so, a- and in many ways, we're set up to 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 fill the gaps. And and so my approach is very much not not to be doing work in in maybe areas where other regulators are involved. There's unfortunately plenty of work to do and we don't need all of this overlapping. So we will uh stay aware of what police are doing and they will keep us informed. And and sometimes provide some, prov- prov- often, almost always provide information to us. Perhaps even mention our role in um bail requirements. Perhaps even mention our role in, um, bail requirements, for example. But we will, we will wait till that's done. But, you know, sometimes police will initiate, uh, an action, a cr- criminal action and then not proceed. So we, we do want to make sure that if, if police suddenly don't proceed, we want to then commence our own action to, uh, to investigate. Uh, we of course have, have a different threshold than, um, the criminal threshold the police.
Yeah, yesterday the Royal Commission heard from a panel of advocates. None of the advocates who gave evidence yesterday are based in, uh, Victoria other than Valid. And they spoke about getting access to the difficulty of getting access to very closed environments, be it within a family or be it within group homes. Is any part of your work directed to making sure that people who are in segregated or closed settings, they might be in group homes, institutions, the SRSs in prison settings, for example? Do you have that sort of active approach in working with advocates to get into those spaces?
We certainly have a, an, an active, um, and continually, continue to develop relationships with, uh, ad- advocacy workers. I think, I, I, I think advocacy workers do some of the most important work in our sector, particularly for a complaints body like us. Uh, someone who's vulnerable or isolated is unlikely to make a complaint directly without, to us without some support from someone who's either an informal or formal advocate. Uh, getting to the people who you talk about, the most isolated or vulnerable people is, um, I think, I think some of the hardest work and, and some of the most important work. And so we're constantly challenging ourselves about how we best get to them, uh, either with advocates and I know the advocacy community find that difficult too. So it's a, it's, it is a constant challenge, all I can say is that.
So what sort of practical steps have you taken to address those challenges in the commission?
Uh, at this stage, it's, uh, partly about talking to other regulators like, uh, say the Office of the Public Advocate who has a, um, visiting, um, volunteer, um,
The community visitors.
Thank you.
And I think you refer to the community visitors
Yep.
as a source of complaints.
Uh.
Paragraph one hundred and sixty nine.
And, um, developing relationships with other, other providers such as, um, you know, state government provides, uh, disability services more in, in the forensic setting and making sure they and their, their staff are aware of us. Uh, much of that work has been hard to do, of course, in, in the first two years of this commission, uh, the, the Victorian Disability Worker Commission's life. We, we had a pandemic, which made everything harder, which I don't need to tell the Royal Commission themselves.
Ms Eastman, I s- I see the time. How long are you likely to be with Mr Stubbs?
I've got five questions. So I wanted now come to, uh, your reflections on the experience in Victoria to a national approach. And, uh, in terms of thinking about whether the Victorian model could be a model for a national registration scheme, would the first thing to be done is to understand very clearly what the benefits of the scheme are for people with disability, for support workers, for service providers and other existing regulatory bodies?
Yes, I think that would be the, the first, the first point of order to, um, the first sort of action to, um, I, I, I think be very clear in, in communications about the, if you like, the value proposition of becoming a registered worker.
And do you know if any work has been done to either, um, identify, research or evaluate the benefits of registration under the Victorian scheme for people with disability, support workers, service providers or other regulatory bodies?
Yes, we've done some of that work, yes.
Have you published that work?
No, we're, we're still, that, that's, that's now informing our, our plans to, uh, change what we're seeing as good and high levels and growing levels of awareness into action of, uh, registering. And it's, it's one of the challenges of a voluntary scheme.
Uh, my almost last question is in terms of using, say, the Victorian model as a template for a national model, um, do you have a view on what would be required in terms of data collection uh, across a, a national system where registered and unregistered workers might be moving between fed- federally regulated support activities and state-based report activities? Is there an issue around collecting data?
I'm not, I'm not sure, Ms Eastman. That's not something I've turned my mind to. I think there's, there's many challenges and understanding the full breadth of the workforce is one of the challenges. It's a, it's an incredibly diverse workforce when you think of all the different work that people do. Uh, but I think that, that's one way of coming at it. The other way of coming at it, I suppose, if we were to go down the route of having a national scheme, I think it'd be worth engaging on whether over time as a staged approach, we make it a mandatory registration scheme with the gradual introduction of standards that we've, that, um, that we would see it, that we're, that we're seeing at a state level in our scheme.
Um, my final question is you say in the statement that the Department of Family Fairness and Housing is committed to an independent three-year review of the scheme which you anticipate will take place in late twenty twenty four. Uh, would it be the case that until we reach twenty twenty four and that evaluation and review process has been undertaken, that it might be premature to be making as, any assumptions about the Victorian scheme being able to transplant into a model at a national level?
I'm not sure if that's entirely true. I think the, the three-year review is, is a good point in time, but we're collecting data constantly and, um, seeking to understand new, new ways of, uh, approaching the registration scheme. And also looking at how best we operate with respect to, uh, the, the high-risk areas we talked about before, where maybe there would be greater benefits for, uh, requirements for registration, for example. So, uh, certainly we expect that we'll know a lot by twenty twenty four, but I don't think you would need to wait until then.
All right. Thank you, Mr Stubbs, for the extremely comprehensive statement. Uh, we've only really touched the surface of the detail in the statement. The commissioners may have some questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Commissioner Bennett.
Um, thank you for your, um, evidence. Just one quick question. Are you aware of any, um, service providers who have actively encouraged, um, their workers to register?
Yes, we, we've had some service providers who, who, who've done that, yes. And, um, uh, we're, we're, we're now looking at some strategies to work more closely with those service providers in particular to, uh, I, I think seek them, to seek their support in, uh, the, the steps required to, um, support, uh, assist workers to actually, um, undertake registration. So yes.
Would you see that as, um, a reflection of a better culture from those providers who are encouraging their workers to, to register?
Yes, I think some providers realise that there's a benefit to, uh, their, their, their clients and to their, to their workers and to the whole organisation in terms of, um, retaining and developing good quality staff. So yes.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm a killer.
Um, no, thank you.
Uh, you distinguish in your documentation, that is the agency, between notifications and complaints. What, what's the difference?
The, the notifications are, that, that we have a, it's a mandatory notification and that there are four criteria, uh, for notification where a worker needs to be putting a person with disability at ha- at risk of harm due to things like, um, sexual misconduct, intoxication and, uh, not, not meeting, um, accepted standards for that workforce. So it's, it's, um, there's a fairly specific four criteria of conduct and that, uh, risk of harm to the service user. Whereas, uh, the complaint side of things is much broader and is generally done with, um, reference to any aspect of the code of conduct, which can be much more about, uh, issues relating to, to quality and respect and that kind of thing.
But both would relate to, uh, at least as far as allegations are concerned, to departures or alleged departures from appropriate standards.
So, sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear the beginning of your question. Sorry, Chair.
Both, uh, complaints and notifications, according to the way they're classified, relate as far as allegations are concerned to departures from appropriate standards of care.
That's correct. Yes, yes.
The, uh, annual report shows that of the forty-six complaints in two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two, twenty result, there were forty-six complaints, forty-three were closed, twenty involved counselling and eighteen no further action. What would be the normal reason for no further action?
Usually we, we're unable to, um, substantiate the matter. Um, then there's usually a, a, a number of, um, inquiries made of, uh, the different people involved. And unfortunately, often it's as a result of, uh, the fact that there's, there are a lack of witnesses. So although we have to close and have, take no further action, the matter, we retain that, um, that matter as a, as a record on our system. And if we do receive another complaint, we can, we can reopen it. But, uh, particularly during, um, long periods of, of lockdown in Victoria, we were unable to necessarily talk to all the people we, we wished to. We often were, but it was, uh, challenging. And so it's often a lack of information, unfortunately.
Yeah, well, it's obviously a difficult time in which a new organisation should operate. Um, just one more thing. I won't go into the constitutional niceties and the interaction between state and Commonwealth laws.
Thank you.
But, uh, no doubt they're very much in the forefront of your mind. The idea is that this should be a one-stop shop for complaints, isn't it?
Yes, I, I, I believe if people, um, if people only have one place to go, one, they're more likely to go there because if people have to think about where they need to go to lodge a complaint, that's one more barrier to them actually making that complaint.
I understand that.
Yes.
But one of the consequences of the interaction between the NDIS and your agency is that people with complaints about NDIS, uh, um, support workers can go either to the NDIS Commission or they can go to your agency. And then if they go to your agency, you then have the duty to refer the matter to the commission. Have I got that right?
That's correct, yes.
So it's a little confusing, isn't it, to have a state and Commonwealth agency dealing with the same complaint or potentially according to the same criteria, that, that is to say, the code of conduct?
Yes, it, I'm, I've no doubt it is.
Hmm.
Happy to comment further?
Sorry?
I'm, I'm happy to comment further.
Please do.
Uh, so yes, it, I, I have no doubt it is, uh, more confusing and I, I don't, um, I don't take any joy in the fact that we provide, um, maybe some more complexity in the state of Victoria. As you say, we do, um, provide, we do provide that data to the NDIS Commission. There, there are also many thousands of workers who we regulate who aren't covered by the NDIS, who we, we're, we're the only regulator for in Victoria. So, um, that's al- that's also important. And I think, uh, you can, well, the, the system can be complicated by overlap, but I think also if we carve out certain sectors, we risk creating gaps in the complaint system, which I think would be worse. I think we've become, we at the commission and, and other regulatory agencies, the way we work, we've become very good at working well with them to provide increasingly, uh, uh, timely responses and, uh, increasingly timely information sharing to make it as easy as possible for the complainant.
Yes, I don't underestimate the difficulties and of course we've seen that through the workings of the APTOS and the relationship between responsibilities under the NDIS for the Commonwealth and the, uh, responsibilities of state and territories where the NDIS, uh, ends. And as you say, it's not only, uh, the NDIS that, uh, provide services to people with disability. All right. Well, thank you very much for your evidence. Thank you for the detailed statement. Thank you for your elaboration on that, uh, today. We appreciate your assistance, Mr Stubbs.
Um, Chair, may I tender into evidence Mr Stubbs' statement? Could you mark it exhibit thirty-two dash five?
Yes.
And there are a number of documents are next to the statement. Uh, I won't read them all out now, but if they could be marked thirty-two dash five point one through to thirty-two dash five point ten.
Yes, Mr Stubbs' statement on the supporting documentation will be admitted into evidence and given the markings that Ms Eastman has indicated.
Thank you. If we could adjourn till twenty past two, please.
Yes, it's now just before twenty past one. We'll adjourn until two twenty. Thank you.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned.
Yes, Ms Eastman.
Thank you, Chair. So we turn to another panel of representatives of service providers. And the focus of the panel this afternoon, which will be the first of two panels, looking at workforce issues from the perspective of the service providers. So we have three representatives and I'll introduce them in due course from Bet Group, Live Better and from Minda. And I think they've all, you've done your oaths and affirmations already.
Before we start, I'd like to thank you each for coming to the Royal Commission and for joining the panel this afternoon. We very much appreciate your assistance and look forward, uh, to your evidence. Um, I will ask Ms Eastman now to ask you some questions. Thank you very much.
All right. Ms Korea, can I start with you? You're Emily Korea. And I might need you just to raise your voice a little bit. You don't have to
Yeah.
be too loud, but just enough so we can hear you. So you are the CEO of a service provider called the Bet Group. Is that right?
Yes.
And how long have you held that role?
Uh, since twenty sixteen.
And before that, you've also had experience working in the disability sector
Yes.
and of the way in which the NDIS operates. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Now, Ms Natalie Forsyth Stock, uh, can I turn to you? You are the CEO of Live Better.
That's correct.
And I'll just grab my notes. So you, uh, have had executive experience of over thirty years.
Correct.
And your experience comes from, may I say, the corporate sector.
It does.
So you've worked in banking, in venture capital, private equity, but you've also had some government roles. Is that right?
Correct.
And, uh, going from that, that business and corporate background, you've come to Live Better as a disability service provider based in Orange in New South Wales.
Correct. Um, we are a disability and general community service provider.
How long have you held the role of CEO and Managing Director?
Uh, four years.
Uh, Dr Panther, you're from Uh, Dr Panther, you're from Minda and we uh, understand that. You've only recently taken on the role of the chief executive of Minda as at the twenty fourth of January. This year or last year?
Last year.
Oh, last year.
Just every year.
So, and you ha- also have a very extensive background in health, community. And social welfare services in Australia and the UK.
Yep, about forty three years worth now.
And you've operated at the chief executive level for more than twenty six years.
Correct.
So you come to Minda with bringing a breadth of experience from the UK. And within Australia around the provision of disability services.
Correct.
But also that broader health and community service context.
That's right.
Right, so we asked you to join this panel so that we could get some perspectives on workforce issues. And in particular, because of where your organisations provide services and the nature of those services. We were keen to have an understanding about what workforce issues arise. Before I start on that, can I ask you, have you followed the work of this Royal Commission?
Yes.
And have you had an opportunity to read the commissioners' hearing reports? That have concerned findings and recommendations in relation to service providers?
Yes.
You're all nodding, so I'll take that as a yes for the transcript. Have you all uh, had an opportunity to read the. Uh, NDIS QSC's own motion report that was recently released?
The one in supporting accommodation.
So you've had, you've looked at those, so some of the issues that I want to explore with you today arise. Uh, from matters arising from hearing reports of the commissioners and also that recent work done by the QSC. So I want to start with the composition of your particular workforces. For the Bet Group, are we right in understanding that you provide services to sixty two clients? And you have two hundred and six workers to support the sixty two clients? And for the most part, you provide services in South Australia, is that right?
South Australia, Victoria and now New South Wales.
So the sixty two clients are across the three states? And of the two hundred and six support workers, are they uh, shared across the three states or are they predominantly based in South Australia?
Predominantly in South Australia and Victoria staff are in Victoria.
Okay, uh, with the Victorian workers, are they registered under the Victorian Worker Registration Scheme, do you know?
No, after hearing this af- this morning, um, it's a note I wrote to People and Culture to confirm that. Because that's something that we would like to support for sure.
All right, so for Live Better, uh, you've told the Royal Commission that you have fourteen hundred and twenty clients.
Yes.
And a workforce of thirteen hundred and sixty five support workers. But I think that also might include some of the administrative staff as well.
Also includes some of the aged care workers as well.
Okay, and for the most part, where are you providing your services and where do your clients reside?
Mostly in regional New South Wales, um, mostly in the central west. But our geographic footprint is from um, Lethgoe at the base of the Blue Mountains. Out to um, Broken Hill, a little bit down in the Murrumbitchi. Um, and uh, central Queensland and northern New South Wales, so quite geographically diverse.
So you extend into the, the sort of uh, border areas of New South Wales?
Um, it's sort of the mid north coast of New South Wales and then we have something in central Queensland, so not necessarily around the border.
Okay, and uh, for Minda, you have one thousand and eighty seven clients. And two thousand two hundred support workers, is that right?
Two thousand two hundred staff in total.
Oh, that's staff in total of the support workers, what's the breakdown?
It's um, of the, the support workers is just under fifteen hundred, fourteen ninety four.
Okay, and is all, all of Minda's services bar one client in the Northern Territory? All based in South Australia?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so can I ask you uh, about the profile of your workforce? You've given us the raw numbers, but could you give the Royal Commission a sense of the nature of the workforce? Is it predominantly women? Are they workforces that are predominantly people from culturally and linguistically diverse backgrounds? Are they older workers, are they people with disability? Do you, I don't think Live Better, you said you don't collect some of that data?
I do have that data today though, um, so.
We'll start with you.
Yeah, so sixty three percent of our workforce is female. Um, fifty seven percent are under forty. Um, because we operate in regional areas, they are not generally from culturally diverse communities. Um, we have some people with a disability who provide direct support, but um, only a very small number.
Right, and for the Bet Group, I think you've told us that predominantly. Your employees are people from culturally and linguistically diverse backgrounds. And that's had an impact on uh, employing people who assume. That unless they're from a culturally and linguistically diverse background, this isn't a place to work, is that right?
That's right.
And what about uh, women and uh, the age of the people who work for you?
So about eighty percent women.
Eighty percent women?
Yes, so it's very female led and um. Female staff, um, and eighty five percent called, very heavy, called heavy.
And for Minda?
So around about um, between fifty five and sixty percent identify as female. Um, we also have a fairly large cold um, group as well, getting towards about thirty percent of our staff.
Right, do, do any of your organisations use students, trainees or volunteers?
Uh, yes, all of the above, um, we do schools based traineeships, um, so we take year eleven and year twelve students.
Mm-hmm.
We also do trainees, um, school level trainees. Um, and we have volunteers particularly in our community transport operation.
All right, thank you.
Uh, BET, we don't use any volunteers, uh, we, for students, we have a collaboration with Florence University. And we use, we give placement for their.
For the students, I'm from Minda.
Uh, we have a cadet program and are in the process of developing a traineeship with local schools. We do have a, about two hundred volunteers, but they are not doing support or care activity. They're doing other activities around the broad range of services that Minda provides.
Now, if you were in the room earlier today, you hea- you may have heard that in terms of the workforce. Many people have more than one employer. For your respective organisations, do the majority of your support workers also have employment with other service providers?
Um, so our split between casual and permanent would give some indication of that. So um, I would say sixty percent are permanent, um, and between thirty, let's say forty would be casual.
And of those casual workers, do you have any knowledge as to whether they work for other service providers?
We ask for secondary employment declarations, so we do keep um, that, not all of them would be working for another service provider. Some of them have diverse jobs, um, some of them would be involved in hospitality, some of them would be, I know one that's a professional musician. There's a range of people who work for us.
And for the BET group?
Yep, definitely, um, most of our casual staff work for other organisations like Minda. Um, and other organisations in South Australia, but we have second work declaration as well that we collect.
Do you know the percentage of your workers who work for other organisations?
I don't hold the percentage, but it's the casual stuff mo- mostly maybe.
And how many casuals do you have as a percentage of the workforce?
Uh, about casuals. Will be maybe thirty percent.
Okay, and with Minda?
So of our almost fifteen hundred support staff, almost two thirds of those, just over a thousand are part time. Um, two hundred and forty odd are permanent full time and the rest, two hundred or so are casual. It's been very interesting for us trying to understand, um, with our part timers and casuals. What the factors are for them remaining at that level. Because as we've been in negotiation around our EB, which we might come on to later on. We've been looking to increase the amount of full time staff and have found some real barriers. Particularly, for example, the perverse incentive of the salary sacrifice program. That many of our staff choose now to work for two or three not the profit employers. Because the salary sacrifice, which is worth, you know, fifteen odd thousand tax free to them, is per employment, not for as an individual.
Right.
And so each time you're with a different employer, even if you're part time, you're entitled to the full salary sacrifice. And so for many of our staff, they're saying they don't want to consolidate to one employer. Because they'll lose that tax benefit from the salary sacrifice arrangements.
Uh, do you keep any records in relation to the retention uh, of employees? So the average duration that people work, we heard earlier this morning that there's a relatively high. Level of attrition in the industry and I think it would be helpful just to understand why that might be the case. So is there anything in the, in Minda's records that keep that data?
Yeah, so I mean, our current retention, the retention rate in the last twelve months has got as, or the turnover has got as high as almost twenty seven percent.
Twenty, in one, in an annual?
In a year, um, the, it was prior to Covid running at about fifteen percent. What we've seen as we've begun to come out of the Covid period is a lot of our staff who originally have come from overseas. Wish to return and therefore don't have the holidays. And have chosen to essentially not continue employment to be able to go back, knowing that there's going to be demand for their work when they come back. So we believe that the last twelve months, in terms of our retention rate, has been inflated because of that factor. Because historically, it's around that mid to sort of fifteen to sort of seventeen percent.
What have been the implications for Minda in terms of service delivery with a twenty seven percent rate?
I mean, it, it has been significant, particularly in trying to ensure that we've got consistency. Of staff that are supporting an individual particular client. However, we have been going through some major, major change processes over the same period. To change the model of um, supported independent living that we're providing. Following a co-design process with our clients and with families and other stakeholders. And so we have been able to consolidate staff and make sure that where we have got gaps. They are in areas of our activity, so our day programs and other types of activities. Which their absence has less impact on the quality of service being provided to a, a, a client. Where consistency, particularly if somebody coming into your home, is absolutely critical.
For the BET group and Live Better, have you got records in terms of retention, attrition, however you might describe it?
Quite a, a large turnover as well, um, we'd be probably closer to the thirty percent.
Right, in a, in an annual?
In a, in an annual period, um, and there's a number of factors, I think, that have contributed to that, particularly over the last couple of years. Um, we did lose a lot of workers in relation to mandatory vaccination. Um, we probably lost between fifty and sixty, some of which um, chose not to get vaccinated, some of which we had to terminate. So we've lost quite a few during that time. We also lost quite a, a few at the beginning of the pandemic who um, probably for their own health reasons chose not to work. Um, and then we had people who were on Jobkeeper who chose to stay on Jobkeeper for a period of time. So it's been a higher rate, um, we tend to lose more people in the first three to six months.
Right.
Um, once they get beyond that, they tend to stay longer, um. I think that the reality of support work for some people um, is too much. Uh, I think particularly if people are doing um, personal care, they often think it's not really what I thought this was going to be. So we tend to lose a few in that first period.
And the BET group?
So for BET, we're around the same very high turnover rate, about twenty five to twenty seven percent. But in the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two year was forty two percent, which was very high.
Forty two percent.
It was very high, but it was really intentional. It's for people that we were not renewing maximum term contracts. Because either they hadn't finished their training or their performance. So it was planned for us and we prepared for it before the maximum term contracts came to an end.
Right, and with respect to your workforces, is there a high uh, union membership rate within the, the workforce?
At Minda, we, we estimate it to be around about forty five to fifty percent.
And the other organisations?
We don't actually know exactly what the, what it is, but we would anticipate that it's lower than that.
Mm-hmm.
It'd be about the same with Minda, about sixty percent.
Sixty percent of your workers are union members, okay. I want to turn to recruitment issues and so I might just sort of focus in on one organisation and ask. The others if you want to contribute to it, so maybe I might um, come to Live Better on the recruitment process. So do you have a designated recruitment team within your organisation? And uh, does that team have human resource experience as well as. Uh, frontline disability support work experience?
Um, they, they have human resource experience, they, I don't believe any of them have been frontline disability support workers.
And is the process of recruitment one that starts with advertising positions or is it a word of mouth?
Uh, look, it varies, um, we, um, because we need a lot of workforce, we use every strategy we possibly can. So we certainly advertise on platforms like Seek, for example. We also have um, an employee referral scheme where employees can refer um, people and. Receive a financial reward, um, we also go out to schools to try to recruit people. Um, we go to universities, um, we go as broad as we possibly can.
And uh, in terms of the selection process?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, are applicants, say responding to an online advertisement required to put in written? Applications or do you have a standardised online process?
Um, generally, we're still on the written application process um, at this stage.
And do they have to uh, make an application that is referable to a particular criteria that's identified by Live Bet?
So we recruit against a position description, um, of which includes the skills and competencies that we are looking for.
And does that position description and skills and competency reflect the NDIS capability framework?
It does, um, it does, and then plus the additional sort of skills that we look for in a broader organisation.
What are those skills?
Well, things like um, ability to work in a team, um, communication skills, comprehension skills. Things that you um, you may not necessarily um, need if you are working one on one. Um, on your own, but you definitely need if you're, you know, part of a broader, um, larger corporation.
Do you require any of your candidate, candidates at the application stage to undergo any psychometric testing or health testing?
Uh, uh, we do health testing, um, so we.
Sorry, assessment, not testing.
Yeah, sorry, um, not at the application phase, I mean, once they're successful, that we do have a health screening.
And in terms of what you prefer in a candidate? Heavens are opening, uh, and the key qualities, what, what can you distill down? What are the sort of people you're looking for?
Look, generally, we're looking for people who care about people. Um, I think the values that people hold, um, and the, the values that they understand, which are important. For um, people with a disability is probably the key criteria.
How do you work that out, uh, at a recruitment stage? Particularly, for example, if you're, part of your recruitment strategy is to recruit young people finishing school or maybe. That are very early in, in their working life.
It's not an easy thing.
So how do you do it?
So, so how we do it is, you know, all you can really do is ask them a series of questions to understand. Um, whether they have those values, but it's not easy and sometimes you get it wrong.
Can I come to the other panel members, do you want to add anything about your process?
Please, thank you, yeah, so going to that very point, um, for a long time, I've held the view that. Um, aptitude is as important as qualifications. I've seen too many people with the right bits of paper who just don't have a love and a sense, and ability to engage. And so what we've instigated to try and overcome that issue is, once somebody has got through the paper stage of recruitment. We're then running assessment centres and in those assessment centres, we use some of our clients who volunteered. So that we can see how people actually interact, help cook a meal, undertake various tasks. To help shape that understanding that we have about the aptitude. Once somebody has got through that phase, we then, the final phase of recruitment in terms of the allocation to a particular client. Now involves the client and family or other support network if the client wishes them to be involved. now involves the client and family or other support network, if the client wishes them to be involved, in selecting the person who will actually work directly with them.
So what stage do the clients and people with disability and their family enter into the recruitment process?
Clients generally within that assessment centre. But once somebody's passed the assessment centre, then the allocation to a particular house or a particular service with a particular client, it now involves the client in that process. So they get to say, and we, you know, and you get that sense of how people actually engage. We do the same with our management level in terms of our team leaders. Um, where again, we'll have individuals from the cluster of clients being serviced by a team. The manager of that team will have representatives of those clients on their final selection panel.
And for the B E T group, given you've got a very substantial workforce from culturally and linguistically diverse backgrounds, um, are there any particular selection criteria that you apply that might be different from other service providers?
So for us, I think the first soft, soft skill that we go for and must truly go through that is communication.
How do you, how do you test that?
I don't know. So um, in the beginning is when they've been short, shortlisted, they get a phone call from People and Culture and that's just to talk on the phone about you and why you applied for this role. From that, they will know a little bit of communication with this person. And if they feel, yep, they can actually communicate, they could really explain who they are and why they want this role, then they will come in for a face-to-face interview with the panel.
Okay. Uh, do all of your organisations do reference checking, police checks or other screening? So everybody's nodding to the reference check, is that right?
And you have screening, reference police, yeah.
And ours, ours is done, sorry, by an independent uh, reference check company. It's not done by us. So it's very independent.
Have you found those screening processes helpful in the recruitment stage of not progressing a person beyond?
Um, we certainly have ruled people out on the basis of those screening methods.
And if a person makes their way through the process and they're offered a position, is it customary that there is a probation period for every new employee? And what, what's the average probation period in your?
Yours is six months.
Six months.
Likewise, we also do for, for a new worker, they'll also do two buddy shifts with, with an existing worker.
During that probationary period, is there a, a requirement to undergo induction training? And is there something quite specific in the induction training process in your organisations?
Yeah, we do an induction training. Um, all our workers um, have a three-and-a-half hour induction. Um, we also do budget buddy shifts as well. We do three buddy shifts normally, but there's no cap on the number of buddy shifts. If people, if their direct supervisor doesn't think they're ready yet, we can do additional buddy shifts.
How many hours training would they do in probation?
Um, in my, well, we do between thirty-five and forty hours of mandatory training a year. So you would say they probably do maybe two-thirds of that during probation.
And would that be the same for B E T and Minda or?
Yes, we have a standard induction which goes over two days for uh, new joiners to Minda regardless of their role, whether they're an executive or a frontline support worker. And again, we have a similar level of, of mandatory requirements in terms of training. We've set that out in detail in our evidence with, and how regularly that is revisited.
Right, so when somebody comes on board, they're employed as a support worker, is it that they start at an entry-level position or will it depend on?
It depends on their qualifications and their previous experience and their life experience.
Do you require uh, all applicants to have some form of qualification? And you might have heard earlier the discussion around uh, certificate three or certificate four. Is that a, um, a requirement for all applicants?
It's, it's not for us.
It's um, a requirement for us, but if we have someone, I think we have about fifteen staff that don't have the certificate three in individual support, but they have a cert-three in aged care, then we consider.
In aged care, so they might have had a similar sort of experience that you think is relevant?
Yeah, but we also really encourage them to do the four modules to get the disability modules.
And for Minda?
And we, around about ninety, just over ninety percent of all of our new joiners have some sort of qualification, either the cert-three or cert-four, or they'll have another diploma if they're allied health or a behaviour specialist, et cetera. And we've, do have a number who don't, but who are working towards that. And that goes back to that issue about aptitude in our cadet scheme, where we want to bring people in who've got the right aptitude. They might, for a whole range of reasons, not have, quite have the right qualification. We want to support them to get that qualification. So the quali, not having the qualification at the point they join may not rule them out from having the role if we believe that they've really got the right aptitude for the job and are make, beginning to make progress on the qualification side.
If, if you frame it in terms of aptitude and cadets, i- is it the expectation from Minda that a person who might start at the entry level will have a career in Minda? And as they progress, work up through different levels, maybe become a supervisor, uh, an area manager or whatever, whatever level she may have, is that the expectation that there will be a career path for all support workers?
Perhaps there should be a career pathway. It may not be within Minda. The reality is that, you know, we're a big sector as a disability sector and you can't necessarily accommodate in one organisation all of somebody's particular needs as they're moving through that career pathway. And it is one of the areas where I think nationally, we need to have more work done on establishing exactly what those career pathways are. You know, and again, I can, you know, forty-three years ago, I started life as essentially a um, a direct support worker, working with people living with Down Syndrome in the UK. Um, you know, and I've had a very successful career on the back of that, going up to chief exec level. And so I do want to see those career pathways and they can go in a multitude of different ways. But we don't really have those well-established. And certainly from some of the evidence I heard this morning, we don't have some of the systemic elements in place to enable that to happen. We have quite a, a lot currently working against people having those clear, clear career pathways.
Right. Can, can I ask each of you, in terms of having a mandated qualification, so a cert-three, what would be your view on the impact of requiring support? Just have that mandatory cert-three qualification, can I ask?
Yeah, um, look, I think it would be problematic for us as an organi, organisation. I think probably only about twenty-five percent of our support workers have a cert-three or above. Um, we find that a lot of our casual staff, particularly in our regional areas, places um, like Bathurst and Wogga, um, often they're doing um, a nursing degree or something. So forcing them to do a cert-three, we probably lose them. Um, but that's not to say that they don't have the right attributes and they have good clinical skills. Um, also, we've got a lot of support workers who've been working for us for a long time and have a lot of, you know, on-the-job experience, have got the right set of values, et cetera. But they're just not interested in formal um, study. And we do find, as much as we try to promote and support people, our completion rates can be quite low.
You've talked about uh, one of the criterias or what you're looking for in, in a support worker is the values, the communication and that sense that they will be able to really connect with the people with whom they support. Do any of your organisations also require some qualification or training in human rights, in uh, what we might call diversity or non-discrimination? Is that something you're looking for? And if so, how do you work out whether someone has got the requisite skills or requires training?
We certainly, um, human rights is one of our mandatory um, requirements. We use the N D I S Human Rights A N U um, course, um, which is very good. Um, how do you work out? Um, we have a, we have a supervision um, system in place where every month, um, our support workers are supervised doing their job. And that's usually where you pick up if they don't have the right motivations, et cetera. We also, um, you know, we get feedback um, from clients and we get feedback from other staff about who has the right motivations and who doesn't.
From the B E T group?
Uh, the same, similar for us. Um, our staff have one hour of supervision a month from the area supervisor. Um, and feedback from participants or other stakeholders like positive behaviour support practitioners who are going to the placement and watching. Um, we are in collaboration to see, to make sure that this participant is actually receiving their choice and control of this person. And if we get feedback from an external stakeholder, like a behaviour therapist, then that person is stepped down with pay to come to the office and.
I want to ask you about that in, in a moment. Just mindful of the time, I might move to another topic. So again, working our way through, you've decided to employ someone, you've committed to the training. Want to ask about the terms and conditions on which support workers are employed. Again, is there anyone in the organisation who has that designated responsibility in terms of uh, supervising the employment arrangements? Is it the same as the recruitment team, the H R team or something like that?
Well, we have quite a large people and culture team. Um, and certainly um, they are responsible um, for pay rates. Um, we operate under Shad's award though, as, so you know, those rates are fixed from, from our perspective.
So you use the award as the determination of what the rates of pay will be? Same for B E T. Minda has an enterprise agreement. Uh, how does that interact with the Shad's award in terms of determining rates of pay?
Um, essentially, it is substantially better than the Shad's award. It's an E B that was originally negotiated and signed off in two thousand and sixteen and ran out technically um, in two thousand and nineteen. For a whole variety of reasons, the organisation, um, until I arrived there last year, um, has not looked to renegotiate that. Um, and we have been in the process of renegotiating that over the course of um, the last couple of months. Um, although that's now hit a roadblock with the new federal I R laws because our main union, the United Workers Union, now wish to pursue a multi-employer agreement um, and don't wish to engage with us as an individual organisation. Um, but essentially, the main difference between our E B and the Shad's award is in things like the penalty rates um, and the leave entitlements. So penalty rates, thirty percent for a night shift as opposed to fifteen percent within the Shad's.
Can I ask you to slow down a little bit?
Um, and a, um, we have for shi, our shift workers, which is the large amount of our support workers, they're entitled to six weeks' leave as opposed to five within the Shad's award, but only four in the N D I S cost model. Um, and so that's one of the reasons we're having to look at renegotiating our E B is that it is currently costing us in excess of five million dollars a year more than the funding we're being provided through the N D I S for the services we're delivering.
Did you hear that this morning, uh, I think Mr McFarlane said that it's possible to negotiate enterprise agreements, but it's sort of, well, I think I used the word ring-fenced by the uh, N D I S pricing as to how flexible and what options might be available in uh, the terms and conditions, but particularly the pay rates for support workers. Have you had that experience?
So that certainly will be in the mind of providers, as it is with us, that our E B predates the N D I S being rolled out in South Australia, and that's why we've got that financial gap. And that's causing us huge issues as an organisation in our sustainability. We made a ten-and-a-half million dollar loss in F Y twenty-two, as did many other large providers. And the key factor in that was on our pay issue. And so that's why we need to try and renegotiate, but as I said, at the moment, we've, we've hit a roadblock on that.
Just uh, uh, composition of the workforce in terms of casuals and permanent part-time have any bearing on managing the cost of the workforce?
Not necessarily for us. The, the key issue for us in terms of that balance is wanting more permanent staff and more permanent full-time in order to provide guarantees about the staff providing a particular client and giving them consistency and reducing the numbers of people that potentially might go through somebody's home. And in discussions with, directly with our staff, and this goes to what I was referring to earlier on, we've been looking at how to, we'd like to, as part of those E B discussions, increase the hourly rate and reduce the penalties and offer more of a salaried option for frontline staff. The union has been very hesitant about that, but many of our staff are quite interested in that. But then it's exposed this issue about multi-employment and the salary sacrifice. And so what we'd have to increase by to overcome that, again, becomes another barrier.
So it sounds like there's so many different levers that depending on what might happen with one lever may have a flow-on effect with others.
Absolutely.
In terms of the way in which you employ support workers, you've got terms and conditions in the industrial arrangements, but do you have individual contracts as well that you require your employees to enter into?
Um, all of our employees would enter into a contract. Um, we very, very rarely use individual flexible agreements, um, really because we don't want a full foul of, um, um, the industrial instrument. So we don't tend to do that. Um, so we tend to just focus on the Shad's award.
Right, and others, do you have?
We, we have individual contracts then.
And B E T too. Do those individual uh, contracts, if you use them, incorporate particular uh, policies that you may have within your organisations and make adherence or compliance with the policies a term and condition of employment?
Yes.
So if, and I think we've asked you to produce some of this, but I'm in the time, not going to go through all the policies. But some organisations say policies are really their guidance, but we're not going to hold you to account to it. But do your organisations incorporate the policies into the terms and conditions?
Yes.
So that if, for example, someone doesn't comply with a policy, that could give rise to disciplinary action?
Absolutely, correct.
breach of contract.
And I think that that's really important in the context of your earlier uh, area of, of questioning around the human rights approach. In my experience, around the whole issue of diversity and respecting self-determination. It's very easy for organisations to um, celebrate elements of that. But for have real meaning, I think we've also got to be clear that we actually do discipline when there are failures of that. And certainly, we have lost staff on that basis because they have not paid due um, attention to those factors. And that then sends a message to the whole organisation that you really do value that characteristic.
So I want to just ask a couple of questions about the Minda enterprise agreement and some features which are, I'm interested in understanding whether this is common across other organisations. So if you've got your E B A there, and commissioners, if you wish to follow along, it's in uh, tender bundle, we're hearing bundle D behind tab five, and I'm at page eleven. There is uh, in the Minda E B, a provision that is called continuous improvement. And that all of the parties to the agreement, so the workers and the, and the organisation, will pursue continuous improvement in all areas of the workplace. And that has a, a very strong focus on compliance with the service standards, but very much achieving higher and greater levels of support and quality support for the clients, families and carers. Is that right?
Correct.
Continuous improvement uh, would obviously place an obligation on support workers to always improve what they're doing in their discharge of their duties and perhaps their responsibilities. How does continuous improvement sit with working out what is remuneration appropriate for the nature of the work to be done if there's a model of continuous improvement?
I think, so two factors. One is just, again, re-stating what I've said earlier, this E B predates the N D I S approach. Um, and so there are some issues in terms of the links to remuneration. But essentially, this is much more around how people are undertaking their day-to-day jobs and how we want to see continuous improvement in the way they do their jobs, and it's not necessarily about remuneration. And so it is the way in which they um, take due notice around somebody's rights to self-determination. It's how they undertake those day-to-day duties. It also places emphasis on the organisation having systems in place. It also places emphasis on the organisation having systems in place, sorry, having systems in place. To, um. Identify what those continuous improvement elements are. And so our quality and safety team are critical in identifying what those issues are. They then flow through into that review of the, the regular training. And what we see as being the sort of mandatory elements of training. So this section of the E B is more about capturing that. Process and seeing that as part of the day-to-day business of undertaking the job of being a, a carer.
Another feature of, uh, this agreement is, uh, a committee called the Industrial Liaison Committee. It's clause seventeen of the agreement. Uh, am I right in understanding that that clause. Really reflects that the support workers are included in. The way in which either continuous improvement is achieved, but also just the workplace culture and functioning. Of the organisation. Is that part of the purpose of the liaison committee?
That, that's part of the intent of that, that it tends to be obviously amongst our, um, care workforce. We have union delegates who are union members. Who don't have an official role within the union but are freed up from the workplace to participate in various industrial type activities. To make sure that we have the voice of that frontline carer in those sorts of discussions.
How, does that body, uh, assist Minda negotiate what might be some tensions or conflict that may arise? Between the rights of employees and workers and the expectations of the clients? Do you see any conflict that may arise in terms of, uh, two sets of groups with equal demands and claims? And a regulatory system under the Fair Work Act and work health and safety? How does? The enterprise agreement help you navigate those issues?
Absolutely, but for things to get to this sort of committee and informalised in that way is really. Um, something getting to a head that hasn't been tackled within the day-to-day running of the organisation. Um, and certainly, for example, one of the things which we've been engaged in over the last year. In regard to recognising the client's right to self-determination. Is a lot of our work health safety policies had been constructed in a way as. To absolutely minimise harm to the worker and to the client, but by stopping doing things. As opposed to them being enabling policies. Um, a great example is approach to pets. I believe that somebody, yeah, ability to have a pet, whether that's a goldfish, a cat or a dog, can be a huge benefit to somebody's wellbeing. Um, and yet we had policies which said we didn't encourage them because of the work health safety impact for the staff member.
So how do you navigate?
So that's where we have to navigate and work through. Well, I think it's about having open sensible conversations. And looking at how you can construct a policy which is, as I say, enabling rather than saying you can't do things. It's easy route is to say you just can't do something for work health safety. It's more challenging to say, well, how do we do it? In a way which is appropriate and which keeps people safe.
All right. So can I come to the B E T group and live better, um, and the issues that I've just raised with Minda? Do you have similar provisions either in policies? Or the way in which you organise your business around continuous improvement and the representation of workers? In, in your structures?
We, we do, so we have house meetings and, um, team meetings, um, which involve, um, frontline disability support workers. Um, similar to Minda as well, we have a quality and safeguarding team. Um, who is also very focused on continuous improvement.
And in B E T?
Same, same as at B E T, we have, um. House meetings are done in the house with the participants present, but then the team meeting is done ahead of us. With just our staff.
Uh, the next topic I want to turn to is where things might not go so well. So it may be that, uh, there are some issues that arise, either in the conduct. Or the performance of support workers. And do each of your organisations have particular policies and procedures? To address performance and we'll start with performance before we get to conduct. So how do you approach measuring performance?
So, um, performance for us, um, we have a twelve monthly, um, performance review cycle. Where all of our, um, staff members assessed against the N D I S quality standards. Um, we also have ongoing supervision, um, once a month, and that's where you would be assessing performance. Um, do you want to move on to, um?
I'll come to conduct.
Conduct?
We'll, we'll deal with conduct, I think, separately, different issues. So performance in the B E T group?
Yeah, so that's done, um, on a probation evaluation. And this for a new worker would be one month, three months and six months. We do this, the one month, three months and six months because we're going, we're, we're, we're aiming. The, the six month probation, whether we want to keep this person or whether this person is actually suitable.
What about if they've finished probation and they're, they're there permanently as a casual part-time? How do you measure and what is your approach to performance reviews?
So performance reviews are done and, and probation evaluations are done by area supervisors. We used to involve team leaders, but then team leaders were on the floor with the staff and that became tricky. So we made that role.
Why did that become tricky?
It became tricky because these team leaders have, make friends as well with the team that they're working with. So it wasn't very. Uh, it wasn't very honest and we thought this role actually being on the floor and leading a team wasn't working. So we made that goal redundant and got an area supervisor who just. Really doesn't work in the house but manages the team and does the evaluations and the performance management.
And, uh, Minda, what's your approach to, uh, evaluating and measuring performance?
Similarly, but in the last twelve months, what we've been putting in place is much greater attention to. The staff member's performance in relation to the client achieving their goals. So that, because that's where the focus needs to be. And to do that, we've had to put more time and energy into the supervision. And we had a structure where, quite frankly, sort of the management level had too big a span. Of client numbers and therefore staff. And so we've moved away from that, and this was part of that co-design process with our clients. Where our new cluster manager has between twelve and twenty clients. And the staff reporting directly to them, so they can do that much closer performance supervision. Re- in relation to the client's achievement of their goals.
Okay, so I wanted then turn to conduct. So in terms of when things might not go well and that our support workers' conduct might. Cause violence, abuse or neglect of, uh, a client. What is the process that your organisation undertakes to deal with conduct? And that might include reporting, uh, is it an automatic stand down and then termination?
Certainly when it, when it, um, it comes to violence, abuse or neglect, it's a, it's a stand down. Um, and then we, um, conducted an investigation. That investigation may be conducted by our people and culture team. But we also have an investigator, um, an ex-police officer. So it depends on the nature of, um, the allegation. If it's a serious allegation, he will do the investigation.
What's the, um, if I can phrase it this way, procedural fairness to. An employee who's going to be stood down on the basis of an allegation that's yet to be investigated?
Well, we continue to pay them, um, until, um, we've conducted that investigation.
And the B E T group?
Same. So it will be a stand down with pay. And a letter will go out explaining exactly what the allegations are and given time to. Get someone to come with them if they want to, given seven days to attend.
And for Minda?
Very similar for Minda.
Okay, uh. In your experience, if conduct is the issue. And the, the issue of conducts are risen as a result of a complaint being made either by. Uh, the person receiving services, a family member or another support worker. Have you found that the policy of immediate stand down has any effect? On the culture of the workplace to report incidents or to make complaints?
Um, I, I find our workforce by and large is a very caring workforce. And when there's an allegation particularly of conduct, um, they tend to be very supportive. Of the person they're supporting, of the client, rather than the staff member. They tend to be pretty hard on the other staff member if they think there's something untoward that's gone on.
So it doesn't, you haven't seen in your experience that the risk of a stand down for a casual worker. Who may have insecure employment has the effect of stifling?
Yeah, I, I think in most, most circumstances, people who work in our industry. Um, really care about people with a disability and in most circumstances, they'll come down pretty hard on them. Their peers will.
I'm asking you that because we're about to speak to one of the service providers who had a, a situation around this and so. Uh, before we speak to Sunnyfield about what it has done in, um. Its response to these issues.
Look, I'm sure there's some people who take a contrary view. You know, I'm sure there's some people who'll say, oh, that's not fair. But by and large, I find that our workforce are a very caring workforce. And they judge each other quite harshly.
Has that been the experience in B E T or have you found that? The threat of an immediate stand down might deter people from raising concerns or complaints?
Yeah, for us, that's, that's very true, um, especially for the young workforce who have just started. They're scared that reporting will probably be a reflection on them and actually not the, uh, the incident. As, as a whole and what it could do for B E T to improve or for this person to actually. If there's risk to be helped, um. Our area supervisors have done an amazing job of that one, one hour supervision every month, really going over why. We must, you must tell me, you must, you must report. It's not because we're going to stand you down. It's just, we want to make this better for people with disabilities.
And for Minda?
Yes, I, I can't say that I've seen any negative impact. I think there's certainly been some tricky. Situations for some staff, again, a bit similar to Beth for younger staff, perhaps who are relatively new joiners. Working in a, a, a shared house where somebody might have been there ten, fifteen, twenty years. And they're challenging them, um, then that can be quite difficult. And that for me then is about how you as an organisation are providing support to those people coming forward, raising concerns.
So you, you've heard the, um, evidence earlier today about the registration scheme in Victoria. And I think you may have heard me ask the questions about mandatory registration. And Dr McDonald and Mr McFarlane dealt with that. Do you, it, I think you've got some in Victoria, but. For the jurisdictions which are, don't have that Victorian scheme. Do you have a view on whether there would be a benefit to service providers and your organisations? If there was a mandatory registration scheme?
Mandatory registration of all disability providers?
Or support workers?
Oh, support workers. Um, I think there is a lot of N D I S workers screening, a lot of probity checks that are already done. So I think if it was done, it would need to be streamlined. Um, I think there's a lot of compliance requirements already.
Right, and for B E T?
Um, I think, I think there's room for it, like she said, streamlined, it would help. Especially when it comes to a worker who has come to B E T, has done something horrible. We have reported, we have stood them, now we have fired them. They've gone to another provider and continue that. There's no way for us to, to know or to, or for the N D I S commission to quickly investigate that and make sure this person. Is never working with people with disabilities. So I think there'll be room for that, but how that will look like, I.
For, for Minda, right, as you are aware, the Royal Commission at public hearing fourteen, um, considered. The experiences of people with disability receiving services from South Australian government. And the Royal Commission also had regard to the reports, uh, and investigations undertaken. Following Anne Marie Smith's death. And so there is the, uh, South Australian safeguarding report. Uh, I don't know whether that's had any bearing on, uh, Minda's responsibilities in the sector. Or whether that has informed any view that you may have about mandatory. Uh, registration for support workers. Do you want to comment on anything that's quite specific in that South Australian context?
I think that certainly from Minda's perspective, we would welcome a national registration arrangement. Because I think what we currently have is a mishmash of different regimes. Some of those split between federal and state, and it's all too easy for individuals to fall between the gaps. We're going through that at the moment around restrictive practices where South Australian government has adopted its own approach. In addition to the N D S approach, which requires two different sets of reports because they're not counting the same thing. So I think a national registration scheme would be of benefit because it would streamline the current potential clunky processes. But also going back to the issue earlier about careers. To my mind, having had that experience across health and social care over the last umpteen years. Having a registration body is a sign that you're a professional group. Nurses have it, allied health have it, doctors have it. Do we so?
Even lawyers have it.
Exactly. Do we so undervalue the job that our direct care staff do? That we don't see them warranting some sort of professional registration body? So for me, it's about actually demonstrating that this is a really valuable service that care workers are providing. Uh, as well as simplifying the bureaucracy and making it more efficient.
All right, so, uh, last question, and it's really an, an open question for each of you, is. Thinking about the current challenges in recruitment and retention of support workers. Have any of your organisations given thought to what might be new or different models or ways? In which you can, uh, recruit the right people, but more importantly, retain them? Have you been giving some consideration to that?
Yeah, that would be one of our number one challenges, um, is the retention. Um, the recruitment we tend to get, in original areas, we tend to get quite a few applicants. It's keeping them. Um, so we have an employee value proposition that has three, um, components. Um, the first is around reward and recognition, and that's not necessarily what you get paid. It's how you get recognised and rewarded. Um, and you feel valued by the organisation. Um, the second part is around health and wellbeing of our workforce. Um, we always say that the sticky relationship is between the frontline worker and the client. And therefore that's the relationship that we need to nurture and we need to look after our support workers. And their mental health and wellbeing is a really big part of that. And then the third one is career development. I mean, I couldn't agree with you more, um, David, in terms of having to make it a more professional. Um, approach so that people do feel that there is a career opportunities and developments.
And for the B E T group?
So at B E T, we, uh, started that in twenty twenty two, beginning of twenty twenty two. It's a programme called Spotlight on Excellence and it is for participant and other staff. To nominate someone that has been doing something amazing towards a client's goal. Or within our values and this person is nominated, they get an award and they get to have lunch with the directors. And really talk about themselves and also what we can do to improve. Most of our improvements have come from Spotlight on Excellence.
Is that enough for retention? Is it to be acknowledged and have lunch with the directors? And I'm sure it's a terrific lunch, but.
It is, it is. It is. A lot of, a lot of, um, staff that have received it have truly chosen us as. Employer of choice. But we also think for retention and. It's, it's something that we're exploring with the South Australian government is targeted, uh, migration, skilled migration. Um, to come specifically for disability. They must have the qualification and speak English of course. But then to be sent to regional, so that's for three years, that's continuity of care, retention for that company. And continuity of care for the, the participants.
And for, for Minda, have you given some thought to? Different innovative ways to build that retention?
It was similar to, um, as others have said on the panel in terms of those, you know, reward and recognition. It's similar to, um as others have said on the panel in terms of those, you know, reward and recognition, et cetera, et cetera. But it's also that element around enabling people to have more, if you like, control. In the way they actually go about their work, you know, for me, a good example was those sort of work health safety policies. Absolutely necessary, but you can have enabling ones that liberate staff to be able to work in a very professional way. That is in the pursuit of a client's goals rather than work against it, so how do we keep making sure we've got that in place? Um and then it's the, the, the career development and creating the pathways, uh I think that's the real gap at the moment. Um on a very practical level, um our biggest hindrance when it comes to our. Um more regional services in the southeast of South Australia and on the York Peninsula is as basic as access to affordable housing. I don't have a problem recruiting the staff, but there's nothing, there's no housing.
For the staff?
For the staff, and that again is a conversation that we're having with the, the state government. Um because it is very, very difficult to get housing that's affordable. Given the remuneration levels in disability frontline work in those areas.
Well, thank you very much for uh answering lots of questions that I've had for you this afternoon, the commissioners may have some. Uh follow up questions as well, Chair.
Oh, thank you.
Uh one question, uh Dr Panter, I wanted to understand better a response. In relation to Miss Eastman questioned around recruitment and if I understood, you said you have an assessment centre. Where clients volunteer to be part of the recruitment assessment of uh support workers. Including being on selection panel, is that correct?
Yes, so two dif, two different elements, we have, once somebody's been through the paper assessment process. Um they go to an assessment centre and that's where some of our clients volunteer. To interact with those potential staff members, so we can see how they, how the, the potential staff do interact. With people with a disability, how they help them cook a meal, et cetera, et cetera. Once somebody has passed the assessment centre to be allocated to a particular job. Supporting a particular client, then that client and their family, if the client wishes them to be involved. Will be involved in that se, that final selection process as to who is going to work for them.
Okay, thank you, so she's got to pick up on what you said, volunteer, so the clients who I assume are disabled. Are not paid for their time as part of this, what I assume is the professional recruitment process, is that correct?
So, yeah, so, so these would be people who are already attending our day program activities, et cetera. Um so at present, they're, they're not necessarily financially rewarded for participating in that, that session.
Don't you think, so can I put a proposition, don't you think that disabled people should be remunerated for. Being part of your professional activities and why not, why aren't they not paid?
It's something, because it's something which we've only just started doing and we are looking at that as part of looking at our overall role of volunteers. So absolutely don't, don't, don't disagree with what you're saying, Commissioner, it is something which we're looking at, but we haven't done it to date.
Interesting, thank you.
Uh George Bernard Shaw said that all professions are conspiracies against the laity. There's no particular reason one assumes why disability support workers shouldn't join doctors and. Lawyers and so forth, to do that, wouldn't it be necessary to have some basic qualifications? As a precondition to entry to the profession?
Absol, that, to my mind, that would be part of the registration, whether that's, as, as I've already said, for Minda, we. Already require our staff to have at least a cert three qualification, so absolutely to be part of the registration system. There would need to be a clear set of criteria that have to be achieved for you to be eligible to be registered in the first place.
It's not just a matter of status, it's a matter of ensuring that everybody who comes into this important role. Has the training that equips them uh to do the work that's required. I take the point that that doesn't mean that everybody who's done the training is necessarily well equipped because there are other. Uh attributes that are required by way of personality, empathy, communication and so forth. But I'm just a little surprised that you seem to resist the notion of, of some qualifications as a prerequisite.
I, I think from my perspective, I'm all in favour of qualifications, I just think that there are practical repercussions of that. Um we struggle for workforce now and I suspect. What tends to happen is our workforce tends to go into areas like hospitality, we compete against those sectors. So what I'm concerned about is creating barriers um so that we don't get the workforce that we need. But I think it's a good idea, I just think the reality, the practical reality, particularly, particularly in regional areas. Is that people, we compete for workforce and it's hard enough at the moment, it takes between. If somebody doesn't have any of the N D I S worker screening or a working with children's checks or a criminal check. Probably takes six weeks for us to onboard them, which time we lose a lot of workers, they go and work in hospitality. Um they go and work in tourism, in towns like Orange, there's plenty of opportunities and that's the problem. That I think if we put too many barriers.
As I understand, is the historically low pay for feminised and casualised workers.
Absolutely.
If you have a higher standard for entry, then the argument for better pay. At a status and so forth, uh would, one might think, would be enhanced.
Um I absolutely agree, um the problem is though, we are constrained by the N D I S funding model. Um at the moment.
That's a different, that's, that's a different problem.
It, it, it is a problem and it's an ongoing problem because I'd love to pay my workers more, but I can't.
A couple of the issues, a couple of the issues you raised, if I understood them correctly, are important but essentially transitional. If you've got people already in the system who don't have qualifications, well, perhaps they need to be protected, kind of grandfathering. Grandmothering, whatever the current expression is, to ensure that they're not adversely affected. And similarly, if people have qualifications, for example, in nursing, one would have thought that they should get credit for those qualifications to the extent they overlap.
And often we'll have people.
Disability support workers.
Yeah, often we'll have people who are studying nursing and they work as a casual employee for us. Um they're great because they bring great clinical skills and they, they care. Um so I wouldn't want to lose those workers either.
I can understand that, um forgive my ignorance, but assert for qualification. Uh who provides the training for assert for qualification?
Any registered training organisation who is accredited to provide that particular qualification.
And does the student have to pay?
Um in some circumstances they do, there's a lot of fee free courses at the moment. Um certainly coming out of the pandemic, there's been a lot of fee free courses, traditionally the student did have to pay. Um the state governments in all jurisdictions, um it's their purview. Um I find the training um parts of state government to be very supportive. And if we are looking for funding, not always for a full qualification, sometimes for a part, part qualification. I've always found them very, very supportive of us as an organisation.
How long does it take to get a cert four qualification?
A year.
It's a year, isn't it?
Twelve months, twelve months with two hun, two hundred hours of practical.
So it's part time, over twelve months. All right, well, thank you very, I'm sorry, have I, yes, I've asked my colleagues. Um thank you very much for your evidence, uh it's been a very interesting and helpful discussion, so thank you. Uh we appreciate your assistance and contribution to the commission, thank you.
Thank you.
Miss Eastman.
Uh thank you, Chair, so there's no tenders for this panel and I, I should have mentioned this yesterday that. Service providers have responded to notices from the Royal Commission. And after the hearing is completed and in consultation with the various. Organisations will then tender that material in due course. So our final witness for today is Mr Highland from Sunnyfield, perhaps if we can have one or two minutes. Just to reconstitute the hearing room and then we'll proceed with Mr Highland.
Yes, thank you again, welcome, thank you, yes, we'll adjourn for a.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned.
Yes, Miss Eastman.
Thank you, our final witness today is Mr Andrew Highland, who you'll see here is with us in person in the hearing room. And I think he's going to take his oath or affirmation.
Uh thank you very much for coming to the Royal Commission to give evidence today. And for providing the information to the commission that's been requested. If you'd be good enough to follow the instructions of my associate, she will administer the oath to you.
I will read you the oath, at the end, please say yes or I do. Do you swear by almighty God that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, thank you very much, please do sit down, I'll now ask Miss Eastman to ask you some questions.
Um Commissioners, before I ask some questions, I was want to put uh context in terms of the session this afternoon. Sunnyfield Disability Services that I'll refer to as Sunnyfield was the subject of public hearing thirteen. Held in Homebush from the twenty fourth to the twenty eighth of May twenty twenty one. With an additional day for oral submissions on the tenth of September twenty twenty one. The Sunnyfield hearing was the first of several Royal Commission hearings examining how disability service providers. Prevent and respond to violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation. Public Hearing thirteen focused on a case study about the experiences of people with disability. Residing in a house in Western Sydney in New South Wales, the house was operated by Sunnyfield. And we reflected on a four year period. Some of the issues examined at the public hearing included how residents who were N D I S funded. Had N D I S funded supports and services, how those supports and services were provided. How their agreements for accommodation and support services with Sunnyfield operated. How Sunnyfield communicated with the residents and provided information to the families. How Sunnyfield responded to incidents that occurred or complaints that were made. And we examined the policy, systems and operations. Other issues also included the extent to which there was supervision over some of the support workers. And whether there was a culture of not making complaints about serious incidents as they arose. Commissioners, you issued a report following public hearing thirteen and it was published on the fifth of April twenty twenty two. It contains twenty four findings and three recommendations. And so this afternoon, we will hear from Sunnyfield about what actions have been taken. Since the publication of the report with respect to the findings and recommendations. In the time available, I may not cover every single finding, but what I want to do is to go to the key and core findings. So our witness today is Mr Andrew Highland, you've been the C E O of Sunnyfield since October twenty twenty two.
That's correct.
And before that, you were the C E O of another disability service provider, Lifestyle Solutions.
That's correct.
And that's a position that you held from sometime in twenty sixteen, is that right?
That's correct.
And you come with a corporate background, having worked in insurance and other corporate settings, is that right?
Correct.
Now, since um your arrival and since the Royal Commission hearing, there's been a few changes, so can I just confer. Confirm some of the changes in personnel, so Sunnyfield announced on the fourteenth of June twenty twenty two. That its former CEO, Miss Cutter, he had resigned.
That is correct.
And you commenced, as I said earlier, in October twenty twenty two.
That's correct.
One uh person who's uh featured in the evidence at public hearing thirteen was Jennifer Luff. And she has now resigned from the, uh from Sunnyfield, is that right?
That's correct.
And according to the Sunnyfield website, there have been changes in the composition of the board, is that right?
That's right.
And there've been ten new members since the public hearing was completed in twenty twenty one.
Sounds right.
Right, and I might ask you some questions about the board members. So you've got a copy of the report with you and uh you have, I think, had an opportunity to read that report.
Yes, I have.
And have you been following the work at the Royal Commission generally?
Yes, I have.
Now, since you've taken on the role of C E O of Sunnyfield, have you had an opportunity to personally meet? With Eliza and or Sophia?
I have um met with Eliza, not Sophia.
Okay, and uh have there been.
I apologize, can I just clarify with this pseudonyms, I'm, I needed Sophia. Is the mother.
Sophia is Carl's mother and Eliza is.
Apologize for the pseudonyms.
Melissa's sister, does that help using the pseudonyms?
I've spoken to Carl's daughter.
Okay, so you've spoken to Sophia?
Yes.
But not to Eliza.
I've spoken to, I've met, I'm sorry, I, I apologize with the, I'm confused with the pseudonyms.
Okay, well, why don't we come back to that and if we need to give you the.
I've been to the house and I've met two of the clients and I've spoken to two of the parents.
Okay, uh but Eliza is the sister of Melissa.
I have not spoken to Eliza.
And is there any reason why you haven't spoken to Eliza at this point?
I am, there's no particular reason, no.
All right, so with, with the findings, um I don't this afternoon want to go through every finding, but. There are few matters arising from Sunnyfield's response to the Royal Commission's notices. And uh and Commissioners, I should mention, Mr Highland will be here with us tomorrow, he'll be part of the workforce panel. So if there are workforce issues, then I might not deal with them this afternoon and we can come back to them tomorrow when we look at the workforce issues. So I want to start with one of the findings, so Miss Peard, who was the investigator. Uh she, in her investigation, found that the Western Sydney House was dysfunctional. And the Royal Commission accepted her observations and made a finding. That the house was dysfunctional, saying that Miss Peard's findings accurately reflect the state of affairs at the house. Since you've become the C E O, have you had an opportunity to review circumstances in the house? And do you have a view as to whether it continues to be dysfunctional?
Yes, I have had a chance to review circumstances in the house, um and my assessment is there is a new. A new team, a new team leader in place, uh that the house is working quite well. Um it has really improved a lot in the last twelve to eighteen months, based on, on my inquiries into the house.
What have been the significant improvements that um have brought the house from a state of being dysfunctional to something better?
I think communication is, is probably the number one factor and a really open line of communication with the. Uh with the family members, um regular updates about what's happening in the household. Um raising issues early if there are issues, um and I think uh team leadership has also been a big improvement. In terms of galvanising the team.
What's been um the key to improving team leadership, are you aware of, of any particular actions that have been taken?
Well, I think there's been two, uh it comes down to capability of the people leading in the house, so there was a very senior person put in. Uh into that house in, in the early stages. Um who had done a very good job in stabilising everything and then we recruited externally for a new. House ma, service coordinator, house manager, that person um comes with a very diverse background. Um in dealing with difficult situations and um complex matters and they have brought real. Just real leadership, real, real ability to diagnose problems, to understand what's, what's, what's required to cut through.
Right, one of uh the findings and I might deal, Commissioners, with finding seven and eight together. Was that Eliza, so and again, if you need assistance and I'm, perhaps someone can write down the. Give you a note, which is only for your benefit, so that you know when I'm referring to different people, who they are. So finding seven and finding eight concerned some findings in relation to agreements between Sunnyfield. between Sunnyfield and Melissa, Melissa being the resident in the house and Eliza being her representatives. So the finding was that Eliza was not given an opportunity to negotiate any terms of the service and residency agreements. Now, in the submissions made by Sunnyfield in response to the council assisting submissions, there was a concession that Melissa's ability to negotiate the terms of Sunnyfield's standard support agreements were limited. And my question is whether there have been any changes in the way in which the residency or service agreements operate that now permit a degree of negotiation on the terms and conditions.
So there is definitely a change in the practice. There are technically no changes to the service agreement and that's something that I identified in my, in my inquiries and something I'm going to look into as a priority, so that it's properly documented. But there is a definite change in the, in the practices of communicating and understanding what those requirements are and making sure that those requirements are fulfilled.
So when you read the report, you would have seen that one of Eliza's concerns was to get information about the service agreement and to understand whether there were particular terms that she might, on behalf of Melissa, be able to change or have some modification. And my recollection is that the evidence was that these were standard form agreements and so there wasn't that capacity to negotiate. If Sunnyfield is continuing to use those standard form agreements, then where do you see the capacity for somebody to negotiate and on what terms you might be able to negotiate?
I understand. So first of all, Sunnyfield absolutely agree that there should be flexibility in the ability of all clients to vary their service agreement, to meet their choice and control requirements. Insofar as we can provide those services. If we can't provide those services, that's a different, different matter. Through my inquiries, I've identified that new agreements have been drafted and they're on the review. They have not been implemented. And again, that's one of my key priorities, to make sure that happens. But the key point I want to make is there will be absolutely the capacity for variations in those agreements, depending on the individual's requirements.
Has the task of, task of drafting new agreements been a task that has involved family members giving some feedback and advice about how the agreements would work in practice for them to understand their rights and responsibilities and also for the residents themselves?
Yes, we've taken into account the views of the families from this particular service particularly. But we want to do a broader continuous improvement on that so that we can make sure that all families can have their say in that matter.
And I assume that's not just limited to the house in Western Sydney, but across the whole of the suite of services to which other service agreements or residency agreements operate, is that right?
That's correct.
And in terms of the people who enter into these agreements, be it people with disability themselves or if they have family members or guardians acting on their behalf, what information will they have about their ability to negotiate?
So there needs to be a big communication campaign that supports this at all levels. Distributed through the, through the houses themselves, through the, through the support workers on the website and all communication channels. That work has not been developed, but it will be.
Now, I want to turn to, as a group, finding nine through to finding thirteen. And Commissioners might have the-
Mrs Eastman, if you've just left those findings, may I ask a question?
Yes, of course.
Please, Mr Highland. Following up on what Mrs Eastman has just asked you, finding six in the report, and I think you've got a copy of the report, it's on page seventy-nine, said Sunnyfield presented Eliza with the service and residency agreements for signature on the basis that they could not be varied and were not open for negotiation. In fact, contrary to what Eliza was told, there was nothing to prevent her from seeking amendments to the agreement. Has there been anything done up to date to correct the information or misinformation that was given to Eliza and presumably to other family members or residents about capacity to negotiate? Or is this something that is still in the works?
No, it's part of the, it's part of the follow-up conversations with the house. A number of commitments were made by Sunnyfield. They just have not been documented formally in an updated service agreement.
So there is no document present within Sunnyfield that any prospective resident or family could refer to, which says you are entitled to discuss with us with a view to renegotiating the terms of a draft agreement with which you may be provided?
I, I, I don't know if that exact wording exists. I would have to check.
It might be a good idea.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs.
The next group of findings is finding nine to finding thirteen. And these are findings that the Commissioner's made in relation to the circumstances where a decision had been taken in Sunnyfield to terminate Eliza's service and residency agreements. And the Commissioners might recall the evidence of this period being a very stressful period for Eliza as she sought to find alternative accommodation and the circumstances in which she felt that that threat was hanging over her. So the Commissioners made some findings in relation to the circumstances of the proposed termination, noting in finding number nine that Sunnyfield's decision in January twenty eighteen to terminate those agreements prioritised Sunnyfield's interests over those of Melissa, specifically to a right to a secure and safe home. And the Commissioner's also made some findings in relation to Sunnyfield being heavily influenced by concern for its own reputation and its desire to take advantage of a window of opportunity and then delays in terms of informing Eliza. So we understand since the hearing and since the, prior to the Commissioner's report and recommendation, and you will see recommendation number one is that Sunnyfield should clarify in writing that the four June twenty eighteen eviction notice sent to Eliza has been withdrawn, that those steps were taken. So it's a case, isn't it, that Melissa remains at the Western Sydney House?
Yes.
And that any uncertainty over Melissa being evicted has now been resolved and there is confirmation in writing that the eviction notice won't be withdrawn.
That's correct.
So my question for you is really stepping back and again, accepting you were not there at the time and that you've come in in recent times. Having read the Commissioner's hearing report, what within Sunnyfield has changed that would mean Sunnyfield as an organisation would never get into the position it was of finding a way or, as the Commissioner's described it, a window of opportunity to evict a young person with disability in that conflict that existed between Sunnyfield and Melissa at the time? What's changed?
So there have been some changes to, to practices and processes in relation to the, eviction is not the right word, for people moving out of residence. And in the, in the case of where we were going to a situation where we felt there was an incompatibility and we were working with the clients to determine if they needed any accommodation. That matter would have to be taken to the board. So that's a, that's a, that's a particular control.
So can I just stop you there? So if, for example, something arose in one of the homes where the ongoing residency of a person was no longer sustainable, for whatever reason, is that before any decision was made to start the process of removing that person from the home, it has to go to the board, is that right?
That's absolutely correct.
And what, what is the effect of going to the board? What, what does that mean? Does the board make the decision? Or does the board have to give advice or oversight of you making the decision?
Well, it is both of those, but the, the part of the process is conversations between the board and the family members. That's one step in that process that has to happen.
One of the issues that arose in this hearing was that Eliza was struggling to find alternate accommodation and didn't have assistance in terms of locating suitable alternative accommodation. Under the current approach in Sunnyfield, would the board need to be appraised of what other alternative accommodation options are open? And does Sunnyfield, through the board, make a commitment to assist the families find suitable, appropriate accommodation?
Yes, so the board are appraised of all movements in, in shared accommodation or all proposed movements. Sunnyfield would have a number of operational processes in place to make sure that all avenues for finding alternative accommodation are explored before we would even consider an exit process.
I want to turn now to, unless the Chair's got any questions arising from those findings, to finding fourteen.
You go ahead.
Finding fourteen concerned the two support workers who use the pseudonym SP one and SP two. And the Commissioners found that SP one and SP two were responsible for misrepresenting and not disclosing their full work histories. However, Sunnyfield did not have in place sufficiently thorough processes to check the accuracy of the information provided by SP one and SP two or to identify the investigative and investigate gaps in the resumes. So we asked Sunnyfield what changes have taken place to address any changes in the screening and recruitment practices and whether or not those practices have been strengthened as a result. Can you speak to what changes have been undertaken?
Yes, I may need to refer to the detail if you want me to go to the-
To the notice?
To the notice.
In paragraph one?
So there are a number of, of changes that have been made to the recruitment. Recruitment practice, and I'm happy to summarise each of those key points.
Yes, if you can.
If that helps. So new, new practices were implemented. Verification of an applicant's employment history and qualifications through a third party. Copies of an applicant's relevant qualifications, certificates and memberships must also be obtained. A criminal history check is obtained independently. Applicants are to provide a complete resume with no unexplained gaps in their history. Independent internet searches of applicants to be undertaken to assess any social media pertaining to them. NDIS worker screening checks, psychometric assessment for leader positions. And as a prerequisite to starting, any position, you must compete, complete the NDIS worker orientation module, quality, safety and youth certificate.
Can I ask you about the psychometric assessment for leadership positions? Is that for anybody above that entry level support worker? So leadership position would be a house supervisor and above?
I'd have to take that on notice.
Commissioners, the next set of findings, I want to address findings fifteen to seventeen. And this concerns the way, if I may summarise, the way in which SP one's employment at the house was managed and the extent to which there was supervision in place. So the Commissioners made a number of findings in relation to, if I can again summarise, the failure of the supervision arrangements. And I wanted to ask you, Mr Highland, in terms of the way in which the houses are managed and the role of the supervisor in the house and the systems of supervising what occurs in the house, what changes have been made?
So one of the, one of the key changes that's been made is that the regional managers must visit the sites on a frequent basis to provide-
What's frequent? What's frequent? Like, is it a weekly?
Each, each regional manager would have about seven services. So every, every, every week or every other week.
So, anything else?
So a number of training initiatives have been implemented to develop skills and capabilities of the, of the house managers. There are some additional reporting requirements that have been put in place and communication protocols between service coordinators and families have been tightened up.
Perhaps if I ask you the question this way, is, are you satisfied or confident that what happened at the house could never happen again as a result of the changes made since the conclusion of the hearing?
Yes, and I just want to put some context behind that answer. As part of my first ninety days on joining Sunnyfield, I spent the first ninety days evaluating a number of services. I visited over thirty services, twenty residential and ten community processes. I spoke to over a hundred staff, clients and family members and I observed practices. I reviewed house practices and reviewed particular communication protocols and documentation. And I looked at the support services as well, that provide quality risk and assurance across all of that. So based on that assessment and based on my knowledge and experience from the sector, I am satisfied that the adequate processes are in place.
And I want to turn, Commissioners, now to finding eighteen and nineteen. And these concerned the relationship between Sunnyfield, Eliza and Sophia when they sought to raise queries, complaints and concerns. Finding eighteen was that Sunnyfield's responses to the feedback from and complaints by Eliza and Sophia were defensive and often hostile. The responses contributed to the feelings of mistrust between Eliza and Sophia on one hand and the Sunnyfield staff external to the house on the other. That's a reference to the management. Finding nineteen was that it was entirely inappropriate for Miss Cutter, the CEO of Sunnyfield and other services staff at Sunnyfield to label Eliza as querulous. Labels of this kind negatively influence how a service provider perceives and addresses feedback and complaints and can compromise the health, safety and wellbeing of residents. In light of those findings, which are critical of the way in which Sunnyfield treated Eliza and Sophia for raising complaints or raising concerns or providing feedback, what has changed in the culture and the practice within Sunnyfield in how family members are treated?
Yeah, so first of all, I just want to say that there's, in my opinion, there's no such thing as a quill and complaint. And if someone has a complaint and they're making it many times, that there's clearly, there's clearly an issue. One of the key lessons from the hearing was that culture was critical. And culture, the type of culture that I'm talking about is we want to have a culture that is open, where people feel safe to speak up, where people feel safe to report an incident, to report a complaint. And that comes from, from leadership, it comes from the top. One of the initiatives put in place was a Clients' Client Rights and Safeguarding Subcommittee of the Board. So that's setting the tone from the top in terms of taking this very seriously. Additional capability has been put in to the organisation with improved leadership skills to encourage and promote open and transparent communication. Listening to people is a communication that we put out on a regular basis. House visitations by board and senior leadership team members. So over three hundred house visits or service visits have happened in the last twelve months. And it's really about having an open, open responsive way. And also, of course, there are complaints management and incident response processes, which have much improved.
As the CEO, do you- As the C E O, do you accept that as the C E O, you're ultimately responsible for the culture of the organisation?
Yes.
And in terms of that responsibility, is there accountability to the board in terms of how you oversee the culture of the organisation? When you say, I mean, yes, is that part of, and again, I'll come back to a session that we had yesterday, K P I for you to report to the board on how you're addressing culture, for example?
Yes, 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 culture and client outcomes. So staff engagement, staff satisfaction, staff behaviour, client outcomes, client safety.
I don't know if you heard me ask this question yesterday, but some models of accountability are not just accountabilities of C E Os to the board, but accountability to those to whom you provide services. Is part of your accountability also accountability to the families and to the people with disability to whom services are provided?
Absolutely, yes.
How are you accountable in that sense to the users of the services?
Well, ultimately, I am there and Sunnyfield is there, but I am there as the chief executive to make sure that clients or service users or families receive the services that they need, that they want. And that the way in which they receive those services is a respectful and good positive experience. That they feel open to raise issues, that they feel comfortable in calling me directly, if that's what's necessary.
If, for example, and I'm not saying this is the case, but say hypothetically that Eliza and Sophia felt that all of the cultural changes had not been made or put in place, then what's your accountability to them or other families in other residents?
Well, I would want to speak to them and ask them for their input into that and ask them why they feel that's the case. And ask them what do they think that we should do, should do better and work with them. Often the families, in fact, in most cases the families and the clients have a lot of the solutions, we just need to listen to them.
Do you know if Eliza or Sophia have been asked at any point in time in relation to this cultural change so that you're not in a situation where Sunnyfield feels in conflict with our family members? Do you know if they've been asked at all to contribute to any cultural change?
I don't think at the organisation level. I think there's been a lot of feedback at the service level.
Yesterday, we also had a panel of advocates and we asked the advocates who may be involved and asked to walk with a person with disability or a family member to resolve complaints or to help resolve issues with service providers. And I asked the question of whether service providers were open and welcoming to bringing in advocates from different advocacy organisations, independent advocates. Has Sunnyfield given any consideration to an approach of welcoming independent advocates? Or getting the advice of advocates on what could change in terms of building a better culture?
Yeah, there are practices, albeit not consistently applied across Sunnyfield, where advocates are are involved and ultimately involved. My personal opinion is that they should absolutely be welcomed in and part of my role is to make sure we have a policy to make sure that happens.
Now, I wanted then Commissioners to turn to findings twenty to twenty-three, which concerned the composition of the board and the representation of people with disability. So the Commissioner's made a finding that the board of Sunnyfield at all relevant times did not include a person with lived experience of disability. And then there's a range of other findings sort of touching on that representation. I think we've mentioned earlier that there has been a change in the composition of the board, so ten new members. Are we right in understanding based on the response that none of the new board members have lived experience of disability?
Yes, that's correct.
Did Sunnyfield seek to actively recruit board members with lived experience of disability? I'm stressing lived to make the distinction between board members who may have family members with disability.
Yeah, I have read the report and I understand the Commission's definition of lived experience. And I don't know the answers to that question at that time. I was not here when those decisions were made. And sorry, just a clarified point, when you said ten new members.
I think we've worked that out from looking at the board members, yeah. And I think one of the findings was also finding twenty-four about the composition of the senior leadership team. And the representation of people with lived experience of living with disability on the leadership teams. And are we right to understand from the response that no member of the senior leadership team has lived experience of disability, but one has a family member with disability? Again, was there, and again, this might be before your time, but do you know with respect to any recruitment into new senior leadership team positions that there's been an active approach to recruit people with disability with relevant experience?
I don't know about that, but it's certainly part of my process going forward.
The recommendation also touched on the role of directors and board members being more connected to the way in which services are delivered. And whether the board members had the opportunity to meet with the residents and their families from time to time. Were we right in understanding that the board has members of the board and particularly the Chair of the Board have undertaken many more visits since the hearing to the services?
That is correct.
Right, I want to just briefly then, Commissioners, turn to the recommendations. I think you've got a copy there. Commissioners, there's some aspects of the recommendations that concern a mediation and I do not wish to go into the detail of the mediation. There's some information that has been provided that's confidential to the Royal Commission. So if I sound evasive in the way I'm going to approach the recommendations, I don't intend to be evasive, but I'm just conscious of not trespassing into those areas. I think we've dealt with recommendation one. Recommendation two was that Sunnyfield should discuss with Eliza revising its service agreements for Melissa to ensure those agreements are consistent with Melissa's rights and her exercise of choice and control. I've asked you some questions about the capacity to negotiate the agreements. But do you know if Sunnyfield acted on the Commissioner's recommendation?
Yes, so as part of the mediation, this was discussed across a series of three meetings.
I don't want you to go into the detail of the mediation. But are you able just to respond as to whether or not Sunnyfield has acted on the recommendation?
On the recommendation.
Yes. Recommendation three was that Ms Cutterhee and an appropriate members of the board should meet with Melissa, Carl and Chen, they're the three residents at the Western Sydney home and their families to apologise for Sunnyfield's failure to prevent the violence and abuse they endured. And discuss what redress and or additional supports and assistance they require. Now, with respect to this recommendation, are we right in understanding that Ms Cutterhee sent a written apology to the family and to the residents as well?
That's correct.
Are we right in understanding that in terms of an appropriate member or members of the board that there have not been members of the board who have met with Melissa, Carl and Chen or their families to apologise or discuss redress? And again, just put the mediation to one side.
No, the Chair of the Board has definitely met with the families to apologise.
Okay, so as far as you're aware, the Chair has had that opportunity.
That's correct.
In terms of redress, I understand these are issues that are the subject of the mediation. But I did want to ask you about one issue, and that was during the course of the hearing, one of the issues raised by Eliza and Sophia was their view that if there was C C T V installed at the residence, then some of the conduct that occurred might have been able to be detected and acted on at an earlier point in time. And the evidence at the hearing went a little back and forth on whether Sunnyfield had a position on the installation of C C T V. And if you've read the whole of the material, you may recall that the then N D I S Quality and Safeguards Commissioner Graham Head was asked about the policies in relation to the use of C C T V. Can you tell us whether or not there's been any developments in relation to Sunnyfield's position on the use of or the installation of C C T V in the residence?
There has been, on my review of the material, there has been a number of conversations and debate about the use of C C T V. The matter is, so what next? I can see the position of the staff and privacy and I can see the position of the of the families wanting to ensure safety. We are really seeking guidance on what to do in this matter. So the answer is no, we have not developed, we are still waiting for regulatory advice.
Okay. I just need to clarify things and that's my misreading of a note that I had. It's not ten new members of the board, sorry about that. It's ten members of the board, some who are new. So I think I misread it now has ten members as new ones, right? That's that clarification, all right. I've covered, albeit fairly briefly, the key findings and the recommendations. You, as a new C E O, obviously had an opportunity to, as you've said, look at Sunnyfield's operations and bring your perspective to the way in which Sunnyfield engages with its clients and its residents with the families and with supporters. Having read the Commissioner's report, have you identified any other areas that you think Sunnyfield needs to address going forward to better improve the human rights of the residents? But also steps that will eliminate violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation within Sunnyfield.
First of all, I would like to say that my observations are that the leadership of Sunnyfield have reflected deeply on the findings and have learned many lessons. The one improvement that I think is going to make the most difference is what I would call is an inclusive governance model, which means the voice of our clients are included at every level of the organisation. From the board, through to senior management, through to middle management and the frontline. And I have been working with the board on developing that model and how to execute that model. And that will be my biggest priority to make sure that we actually have systems and structures to capture that voice and to make sure that voice is brought into our practice and that our responses are effective and appropriate.
Thank you. Well, they're my questions. I'll have some more for you tomorrow morning on a different topic, but the Commissioners may have some questions.
Mr Highland, when did you read this report, public hearing thirteen?
When?
When did you read this report, first read?
Well, I've read it a couple of times, probably back a year ago when it was published and then more recently.
Did you read it before you took up your position that you now hold?
I did.
What view did you form on the basis of the report concerning the organisation that you were about to head?
My view was that the organisation really needed to work on understanding the voice of its client. It needed to work on its culture and it needed to work on its communication. I think, yeah, I'll stop there.
To your knowledge, has the board provided whether internally or externally a formal response to the findings in the report and the recommendation?
By a response, you mean an action plan or a?
I mean a written response to the report, which could be the form of an action plan. It could be in the form of a commentary. It could be in the form of a mayor culpa and we're going to do better. I don't know what the written form might be. I want to know whether there has been.
There has been a number.
Great, Chair, can I just clarify your question so there's no confusion? Whether you're asking about a public statement? Because as you will be aware, there have been notices directed to Sunnyfield on these issues which are confidential to the Royal.
No, I understand. I'm talking about, I said either public or within the organisation. I'm not talking about notices. I'm talking about a formal response to staff in the light of the public hearing report or a public statement, not to this Royal Commission, through notices.
I don't believe there is a public statement or a private statement to staff.
Thank you. We've clarified, I think, the membership of the board. There are now ten members. Since the report has been published, have any members of the board left and been replaced?
So two new board members have joined. And I believe two have left. I'll have to just check that.
May we take it that Ms Ingram is still the Chair?
Correct.
Is Clayton Hughes still the solicitor for thee?
Correct.
And there is remuneration work that still goes from Sunnyfield to Clayton Hughes.
Correct.
All right, thank you. They're the questions I wanted to ask.
No, thank you.
The opening discussions or questions that you had from Ms Eastman focused very much on this house and the changes. And you said that there's new leadership in the house and they're stabilising and there's a new. How have you extended what was that experience and that finding across the quite considerable holdings of Sunnyfield so that it's beyond just stabilising and changing that house arrangement?
So for context, there are forty-nine residential homes in Sunnyfield's service offering. I have visited about forty percent of them. My observations are that the lessons that have been learned have been implemented partially implemented in most of those properties. I can't say for all because I haven't visited all of them. But there's been a significant investment in training, in improved supervision, improved communication and protocols of family and quality risk and safeguarding.
So you can't guarantee that that standard's being met in that large holding of houses that you have?
No, I can rely on audit reports. I can rely on audit reports, that extensive audit reports that have been through the whole set of services.
Does that include looking at complaints that you receive in other houses beyond this house? Have you been looking and tracking at those complaints and seeing what it tells you?
Yes, I observe all complaints are reported to me. We track and monitor and trend and investigate and follow up.
Much of your holding are larger homes, aren't they? They're five, four, five bedroom homes?
Four and five are the biggest proportion, or some three bedroom.
Are you still acquiring houses of that size? Or are you looking at smaller arrangements that might better meet the needs of individuals to live differently?
So one of the things we're currently talking about and setting about is to speak to the clients and ask them what they want before we start to invest in more services.
And that those decisions are being made before you acquire more?
Yes, well, the decisions that are made is part of acquiring.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr Highland, for coming and giving evidence today and for the responses to the Royal Commission. As Ms Eastman has indicated, you will return tomorrow for another panel.
Thank you. That concludes the evidence today. We could resume at ten A M Brisbane time tomorrow.
Thank you very much. We'll resume. Thank you very much. We'll resume at ten A M tomorrow.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned.